Attention, everyone.
Start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
War bills assigned?
Yes.
Cool the agenda.
Move that we approve the agenda for the January thirty-first meeting.
Second in. All in favor? Minutes on the last meeting?
Um, I do have two edits.
Okay.
Um.
Want to make amendments?
Amendments I'd like to make under section five town administrator weekly update. I'm talking about for the April sixth town meeting, it says that we're gonna decide if it would be eight thirty, nine o'clock. We did make a decision up at last week's meeting that it was gonna be nine o'clock, so I want to add that so people who read the minutes know.
Okay.
We selected a time and then under um, the liaison reports for the Mary Grant, um, it says that there are two new potential members. Um, there was actually one new member who had been sworn in, so I want to make an edit for that, and one new potential.
Yeah. So you're making a motion as amended.
So I move to approve the minutes as amended for January twenty-fifth.
Second in. All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Town administrator weekly update.
All right, just a couple items for you tonight, we've got a very full agenda. Um, first is that we did open the bids for the demolition of the building last week, um, after speaking with the chair, because they went from such a low to such a high, um, he was hoping you could have a brief conversation if you had questions for the uh, low bidders, he's gonna be reaching out to them. I know he had a couple on the zone that he'll present, but did you guys have any questions for the bidders?
I don't.
Oh.
Okay, so David, just yours, and then we'll reconnect next week?
Okay.
Sound good? Um, next is to let you know that the road assessment, or at least draft, has been done. Uh, Sabeogo Technics has um, offered to come to a selectman's meeting and present that to you, so is that something you would like?
I think it'd be good, makes sense.
Yeah, we're just looking through it, it looked pretty good, but yeah.
And I gave you guys binders, um, we'll forward that to the road committee and the road commissioners as well.
Let them know of that meeting, so they can attend.
And the last was just to let you know that the uh, EMA director did give me confirmation that he will be able to attend next week's meeting.
Oh.
So um, bring your questions for him.
Great.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, department head, community chair updates?
So we, nope.
They're all jumping up.
You shouldn't have given this one in wrong.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just here uh, just to give a quick update of what's going on and um, enacted right now with uh, some of the, we have a, over at Moose Pond, we have a gravel mineral extraction, um, that is uh, applied for blasting with the state. Um, I, he has sent out a letter to the, a bunch of the abudders or neighboring properties for an um, pre-blast inspection. So I have a bunch of, uh, I had a bunch of residents contact my office and I believe some of the select board members, um, with their concerns. And I reviewed, thoroughly reviewed the ordinance for a while as with the, with legal counsel and um, there is nothing in our ordinance that prohibits blasting for mineral extraction. Um, there is no special permitting for blasting at, you know, uh, of any sort. I did speak with the pit owner today, we did have a conversation, he is gonna inform uh, me before he does do the blasting and he is using, obviously, he's gotta use a professional um, entity to do the blasting, um, that's state certified. He also did tell me, he did provide me a little information that he did drill down thirty-five feet and he never touched water. He's not blasting, obviously, he's gotta stay above the, the water table, five feet above the water table anyway. So he went below that and never hit water. So he's confident that there's not gonna be any issues with this, um, so. That being said, I just wanted to let you guys know, because uh, like I said, I know that you guys had known about it or you had received some stuff and I have gotten a good amount of emails and a bunch of back and forth dialect with some of these people.
Are the abuddas' primary concerns have to do with water?
They're, yes, water quality, um, you know, they, they hear the word blasting and they just, they think, a lot of people go into the worst-case scenarios. And obviously, and that should be a concern, but.
Yeah.
These, these people do this for a profession, you know, you gotta rely sometimes, you know, rely that they know what they're doing and, and.
What they do is they're doing a pre-blast, they'll go to every house in such an area. They go in the cellar, they look at cracks in the foundations, they'll take water tests, they'll do all that so that they do a blast and all of a sudden someone say, hey, my foundation's cracked.
Yeah.
They'll tell whether or not it was from the blasting and they'll know if the water is good.
I know this is a, I know it's a house inspection, I don't know if it's a water test at this point. I did call around some neighboring towns to see what some of their procedures were for blasting and, and some of the towns, just like us, don't have anything in their, in their ordinance. Some towns do, um, where they might see a lot more blasting, more infrastructure, things like that, but um, a lot of towns in our size, they don't, they don't deal with it.
So a, a property owner uh, who's concerned about water, um, probably has concerns about uh, flow rate and uh, uh, any contamination that might.
Yeah.
Leak into their well water, is that, have I got that right?
Correct, so if, if, uh, if a water test was required, they would deal with the flow rate, they would check your contaminants and but E. coli and all this other stuff, they would do a pre-water inspection in a, in a post. I can't just make something up and say, hey, I require you guys to go do this.
I, I appreciate that. But let's say there's an issue where they have tests, they have a standard before the blasting and there's clearly been a change of some kind.
Right.
What, um, what recourse does the property owner have?
At this, I don't, I don't, I obviously, I'd have to talk with legal about that, but it might just be a civil, a civil issue between them, the mineral extraction company.
Between them and the pit owner?
Yeah, and, and mineral extraction company as well as the, the blasting company.
The blasting company that I use has had issues where somebody said their well went dry and they're in charge to cover and have them drill more.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, so the, the pit owner is hiring someone who's got that insurance?
Yes.
So we just gotta make, they need to make sure as property owners, they've got a baseline testing of uh, those conditions, so if there's a change, they could go after them, so um, if, if, if the blaster is uh, is not gonna be doing water quality tests, I would encourage that.
People to have it done.
Have it done.
Yeah, no, and.
And, you know, so that they're, they're protected.
I encouraged, you know, everybody.
It's not that expensive.
Right, and the people that have called, they've asked about the inspection, I, and I told everybody, I encourage you to, to do it, because if, worst case something, something does, something does happen, if you refuse to do the inspection, they're not gonna, they're not gonna honor anything that you say went wrong.
That's right.
Um, so let them in your house, let them do the inspection, check it over, you might feel that it's invasive, but do the necessary steps to cover.
So the town has no uh, uh, role in this whatsoever?
No, actually, the only thing I could find about blasting in our ordinance was that, um, in the good neighbor policy standards, blasting is exempt from noise.
Okay.
And that's the only, so the only thing actually.
Okay.
Was against this. So, um, that's, that's about it and.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will? Oops.
Will Langley, uh, road commissioner, uh, I got a call from a lady from the York County Soil and Water today.
York County what?
Soil and Water.
Yeah.
Alex Brown there, um, I guess there's a new round of grants coming up, uh, this coming year, I guess the, they're getting some more money from the state. And uh, so they wanted to know if uh, the town would wanna enroll in this like, community, uh, like, is like, community action plan, so the hundred thousand, so we're eligible for a hundred thousand dollars of money to use for like, infrastructure. Uh, the, all the rain we've been having, um, it's for uh, she said there's about a hundred and seventy different things we could use the money for. Uh, you could use it on buildings, uh, a whole pile of stuff, it's, it's just grant money that the state's letting towns have and I believe she told me that Shapley's already signed up for this program or something.
This was the conversation, David, that you and I had today that we were gonna um, consider possibly bringing to the five o'clock. I, I forwarded the emails to all of you, this was the CRP program, today was, Friday is the last day. She was looking for interest, um, what she sent us, the attachment was um, was seventy-five hundred dollars, it was an electric car, did you?
Oh, I don't know, she didn't say nothing about it.
Yeah, I mean, I forwarded all of you the documents, so um, we just didn't have to discuss it.
Less is a different, less is something different, I don't know, but she told me that like, we're eligible for like, this money and there's a bunch of.
She wanted them to sign the agreement, right?
Yeah, I guess so, and I said, well, I'll ask them tonight, I mean, I don't have any literature or anything on it, so.
I mean, I'm happy to print it off when you get to a conversation where I can.
Did you say the, um, it has to be done by Friday?
Yes, Friday was the deadline.
And um, so, and there's potentially a hundred thousand in grant funds?
I mean, assuming we're talking about the same thing, that's not the information I got, but um.
My question is, is to sign this agreement, what, what do we have to do, like, is there?
Yeah, I guess it's.
It's just showing interest, right?
No, it's just like, yeah, showing interest, there's no money.
Expresses interest?
Yeah, there's no, we don't have to pay no money, so like, let's say like, uh, for instance, like, we wanna put like, heat pumps on all the buildings or something, they'll send somebody out, look at all the buildings and give us a price to put heat pumps at. I don't know, I just thought, I'd just say I'd bring it up.
It's simply expressing an interest, it seems to me there's no reason why we wouldn't do that and preserve our right to continue to look at it and decide whether or not we wanna apply for the grant formally, does that make sense?
So this is Alex Brown, right?
Yeah.
So, my name is Alex Brown, I'm the Conservation Tech for York County Soil and Water. I currently work at the Community Resilience Program, it is my understanding that Acton expressed an interest in enrolling in the program and you asked me to call her to see where that interest came from, she didn't have any record. This just requires a new service provider grant, which would need to include a letter of support from at least two communities. Shapley's currently working with us and she's, she drafted a letter for you to review, it doesn't tie you to anything, it just involves you in a program.
And she told me, I guess.
See if you're interested.
She told me there's a hundred and seventy-five different things that it, the money can be used for.
Those would be like roads or anything like current projects?
I just wanna make sure there's no cost sharing here, Jennifer.
Yeah, so I mean.
All the storms we've had lately, the damage.
I'll sneak out, I'll sneak out and print it once they get into the budget deliberations.
I didn't know she, I didn't know she sent it.
Yeah, no, and I called her and asked her specifically who she was communicating with, with the town of Acton, because we had no idea what she was talking about. She just says, there's interest, there're interest, she didn't give me any names or I would've reached out, so. Let me print it off and we'll revisit it at the end of the agenda, if that's okay?
And there's like, one more thing, she said that, I guess, seeing Shapley already signed up, we could like, work together with Shapley to come up with like, a plan if we wanna do something between the both communities with the money or something, I mean, she went on and on for like, twenty minutes.
Well, maybe we can decide that once we have a chance to look at it more detailed.
All right, and then uh, one more thing, uh, seeing we finally got a break in the weather and it's gonna warm up tomorrow, we're gonna go get some coal patch and we're gonna go patch a bunch of holes tomorrow, so that'll be all done.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any more department head, community chair? No? Okay, we're gonna go to liaison update.
Okay, um, with regard to municipal management, uh, efforts have primarily been working on uh, putting the budget together. You're gonna see more of that tonight. Also had an opportunity to work with uh, Steve Perrello on the cemetery committee, he came in and spoke to me about his plans and so it was great to talk to him and um, you're gonna see some of that in the budget tonight. The only other thing is I had a chance to talk to uh, a person at Mass Purse, Main Purse, Main Purse, excuse me. And um, that, we're gonna take a, a fresh look at our retirement plans. There may be an opportunity to do a little better for our employees with the retirement plan, perhaps at even no cost, so we're gonna be taking a look at that and we'll be reaching, reaching out to department heads when that occurs.
Did you wanna update on the other company that was similar to Mark Roy that we had the first meeting with?
Oh, yes, yeah, I, I think in a prior meeting I had mentioned that we were talking with a firm that could take over for the uh, the accounting services that Mark Roy's firm had previously, had been uh, providing. Basically, we've, we terminated the relationship with, with Mark Roy effective twelve thirty-one. And so the treasurer has now taken over responsibility for all the AP, was always doing payroll, but the AP as well. And um, um, he's also provided all the accounting information for the first six months and he's been working with us to figure out how to seamlessly line up their records with our records and he's been in touch with our auditors and everything looks very good in that regard. We're continuing to um, to consider a, a director of finance position and uh, we don't have a job description yet on that, but maybe at the next meeting we'll be able to do that. So, so those services have been discontinued, the billing stops as of twelve thirty-one and so there'll be some savings there and that will allow us to um, um, support the recruitment of a, of a director of finance. Anything else on that, Jennifer?
Nope, I think it was just letting us know the other company wasn't.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, there was another company, Markham, that's where I started, that had shown an interest, they have indicated they are not interested. So uh, that's the reason why we're moving towards uh, an employee that would be hired.
Okay. Ed?
Sure. The only update I got is uh, just quickly, tomorrow, the group that is looking into the pricing for uh, our next contract with disposal of our trash and whatnot, we have a field trip to Eco Maine to see what they have to offer. We've been dealing with them right along, but they wanna have the group up and. So the subcommittees going up there tomorrow morning. Lincoln School's still trying to get some numbers, but not having much luck, so.
Dan?
I've just been in communication with Michael, the chair of the Conservation Forest Committee meeting, kinda with about some agenda items for next week's meeting, Tuesday at six PM, and yeah, the school committee and budgeting next Thursday.
I have no update on the roads with the committee this week, we're gonna move on to old business floodplain ordinance.
I'm sorry?
Floodplain ordinance.
This, you know how I love this projector, so I'm so tied up into this, I just wanna give kudos to Jason, he's helping me through it, so if you see me looking over it, I just, for some reason, this projector doesn't like me, so I'm just proud of myself that we're up and running, so. Apologize for not focusing, um, floodplain, so last week, uh, Jason um, presented to you guys, you had a chance to look at it, I've asked him to come back and stay for that piece and to make sure my laptop works. So he's here to answer any last-minute questions, if the board is ready to move forward, um, we'll release it from his hands onto mine as it's not a planning board issue, it's gonna become a selectboard issue, but he's here to um, answer questions he might have.
So Tom, you missed out last week, so um, we were presented last minute, really, they sent me a final notice, which they never sent a first notice, um, that we have to adopt the floodplain insurance management plan. If we don't, the current residents who do have floodplain insurance will lose it, um, so it's, it's a necessity. Some communities don't have floodplains, so they're not adopting it, but we have, I think it's eighty-eight properties within the floodplain, so it's a substantial amount um, of properties that will need this insurance, so.
Tom had asked me earlier if legal had reviewed it.
He, he has done it, so he has looked at it, the only changes I did was I struck, so may, uh, the state of Maine has provided us with this ordinance, that's something they drew up, um, all I did was strike out, um, and I spoke with her today too also. I struck out the planning board, replaced it with code enforcement officer wherever it was needed, because the fire department already does floodplain management permits, uh, and we already do the review. This just now is just gonna spell out, if somebody's in the floodplain, how do you go about? What are the repercussions if you are in it, if you wanna build, can you build, all this other stuff? Now it just spells it out and it's just, we're just sort of changing the zoning ordinance, just found, found it better just to put it in as a regular ordinance, kinda like we have a, a road ordinance and, and things like that.
Our legal has reviewed it?
He has looked at it, I don't know if he's done a full, complete review over it, um, but, I mean, I would, I would assume that the state attorneys have, have.
Well, state drafted this.
State drafted it.
Has issued it with recommendations for towns to adopt.
Yeah, and when I told her what I did, I was striking out the planning board, she goes, completely fine, if you were to make more changes, I need it back.
Yeah.
And then they would have to review it again, but where I, all I did was strike out the planning board, um, she was uh, completely fine with it and didn't wanna, didn't even care to see a copy of it.
So we need to approve that by when?
Well, so it has to, um, it would be going on the warrant, the April sixth warrant, so uh, if you approve moving it forward, we'll start scheduling, I'll start scheduling public hearings.
Right, I need to, we'd have to notify it, uh, it's like, seven days and twelve days and then hold the public hearing, like, thirty days before the.
So we'll work out that timeline, we're just looking for your blessing to move before.
My only question is the fee, it's fifty to a hundred, that changes because we have.
Because we charge a hundred already, we charge currently a hundred um, for any kind of floodplain permits. You know, in the future, we may be switched from a major to a minor, you know, one might be fifty, one might be a hundred. You know, something like that, because, but right now, all I have is a hundred dollar set fee, um, so I'm just going with what we have.
Okay, are we gonna try to do this in April?
And I'm understanding from the back that they can't hear you well, so if you can pull your microphone closer. Yes, the plan, all of you.
Okay.
The plan is to put it on the April sixth uh, annual town meeting with your blessing.
Well, so it has to be adopted by uh, June or July seventeenth of twenty twenty-four. If it's not adopted by the seventeenth, the eighteenth, people lose their insurance. So the only way, unless you do a special town meeting, but I figured it'd be easiest just to do it on that.
I think that makes sense, looking at it, like, just like you said, the only thing you changed was the.
Yeah.
Planning board accord and then the, the fee change, so I see no issues with that.
And this way, it, like I said, it spells it out for somebody that's looking to, to build in the floodplain or already currently has property in the floodplain. I don't have to explain it, I can just point him in the right direction.
Well, I think that's something we have to put forward anyways, as, as amended by the.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move forward and next week I'll uh, present you with a timeline to work on its adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need a?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on that next week, right?
Yeah, we'll vote on the actual timeline.
Okay, sprinkler system, fire station.
So we've asked the fire chief to come, if you remember uh, last week, and I apologize, um, I only have three, but. Last week, we didn't have um, three bids, so we, you asked to hold off. Those are uh, three copies of the two bids, so I just.
Two bids?
Well, he's got information on the rest of it, he's gonna. I'm sorry, there's only three copies.
Oh, there's three copies.
Here last week and his was in a different packet.
Go ahead, pass that down, I'm all set.
I've seen it, I've looked at the numbers.
All right, good evening, uh, so I'm here tonight, uh, during our quarterly inspection on our fire protection sprinkler system in the firehouse. It failed, the pump stopped working, that pump was installed uh, when the station was built in nineteen ninety-eight. So um, it's been tested quarterly ever since then and we finally, it finally failed. So I re, uh, got quotes to repair it, it's been a, it's been a hard time trying to find people to do the work. Last week I had asked town administrator to put forward what I had, it was requested that I reach out to Kittridge, where he does the townwork, uh, talking with him, he's not interested in the work, it's kinda out of his scope. If we're in a true jam, he'd try to help us solve something out, but uh, it's not really his scope, so he had no interest. Streeter and Sons, uh, well, well and pump, whatever their, their name is there, uh, in town, uh, can't touch it 'cause it's tied to the fire protection system, so I couldn't get a quote from him. Uh, I called Atlantic Water Solutions that you had recommended to the town administrator and I left a message with no callback. So um, the two quotes, what you have in front of you, one is the sprinkler company of nine thousand eight hundred dollars that does not, I read through the uh, thing a little better today, that does not include the uh, electrical work, so that would be an extra cost on top of that, which I didn't get, but.
Ninety some hundred dollars?
Nine eight hundred bucks, yeah.
Okay, and the other one?
So the other one is Hagerty Plumbing and Heating, uh, they do a bunch of stuff for the city of Sanford. Uh, I got uh, his name and contact from, obviously, Dave Langley. Reached out to him, he does a bunch of stuff for the city, does Shapley's Elementary Schools Fire Protection System. He gave us a quote to do the work at five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Include the electrical?
That includes the electrical.
Nice.
Uh, that is signed, sealed, delivered, uh, electrical work, I talked to him uh, briefly before I came over here tonight, either the end of next week or the first of the following week, it'll be done. The other company, the sprinkler company was uh, ten to twelve weeks uh, to schedule it, so.
That's why they were ninety hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm at, so I'm, I'm asking to uh, go with Hagerty Plumbing and Heating at fifty-eight forty. So. Which is of. I, I just wanted that third quote, you went and tried getting it, that's all we needed? Yeah, and I had tried getting it beforehand, but other than the town plumber, Kittridge, I had tried Streeter and Sons and then I got these two, so I had tried the three, but obviously.
Oh, I understand.
I had told, I had owned, uh, when I talked to James, I had owned not, calling him, 'cause I uh, envisioned faucets, toilets, sinks type of thing, which he was like, yeah, you're right, that's kinda outside my scope what you're looking for, but uh, if you're in a jam, I would've helped you figure something out, but it sounds like there may be already, already other plans in place, so that, of people that do the work on a regular basis, so.
So, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Make a motion, we hire Hagerty Plumbing and Heating uh, to fix a pump at the fire station, fifty-eight hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can all just sign one and send it this way?
No.
Well, you can sign yours and just pass it out.
I wrote on mine.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll sign that one then.
Sign that one.
Drawing pictures over there?
The other one was either quote.
Uh, signed in red, uh.
I told you.
Yes, sir. Okay, Sabeogo Technics, transfer station update, concept plan.
This is just FYI, it's gonna be a discussion, I know, so it's just to keep the board updated and we will put it on next week's agenda. Uh, the transfer station superintendent also just received a copy, it's hot off the press, Will, remind me, I'll get you a copy. But this is, uh, per his email, the latest draft that they've put together based on the last meeting that was had with um, Robin, Ed and the agencies. So take it home, look at it, and will be on next week's agenda, Robin, you be prepared to come and answer any questions?
Okay, we're down to new business, mass gathering permit.
Come on up, so this is Mr. and Mrs. Philippe Flahin, which um, I've had an interesting, fun conversations talking with him over the last few weeks. Turns out he and my husband and brother-in-law were old friends, we got some funny stories, but he is having an event and we have to, I think, make mention to this little man, can we do that? Is that okay? So this, he's waving, so this young man plays the drums, and if you haven't ever seen his videos of playing the drums, he is a phenomenal uh, young man, so um, they're throwing an event, um, they're gonna tell you a little bit about it, eighties hairband, if I recall, at the fairgrounds in May, so.
Yes.
I do have, they've paid the fee, I have the forms, I have the liability insurance and the liquor will be handled by an outside source licensed through the state.
Yes.
Okay, take it away, what did I miss?
So, um, our plan, we have um, hosted and put on other events, just not for a town and needing a permit like this before at other venues. And we had the opportunity to play at the Acton Fair this last year and it was an awesome stage, great venue, grandstands and all of that. So um, we would like to put on an event here, um, it's Memorial Day weekend, it would be May twenty-fourth. Um, and we plan to have um, our band, which is an eighties tribute band, along with a Kiss tribute band. We will have hired security, um, our plan is to just use the one gate. We have already hired or upon approval, um, have somebody um, from Sanford that has a liquor license that owns a business in town that will be responsible for the alcohol, um, and that is our plan.
How many bands?
Uh, two, possibly three.
What is the timeframe, you said the date, but what is the time that these guys will be playing?
Um, the timeframe, we would plan to probably open the gate at six o'clock with the first band going on at seven and everything would be done by eleven.
Any noise issues here that we need to, you're aware of the noise ordinance?
Which is what time, or?
I'm, that's what I'm, I.
Is it?
Jason?
Why not? That's what you have, that's why it's on the timeframe.
Do we have any concerns with noise ordinance for the, a band from six to eleven? An eighties tribute band?
I know who they are, I just asked them.
Oh, okay. Does it, will it affect the noise ordinance at all in town? No, it's at the fairgrounds, it wouldn't be any different than what happens at the fairgrounds now, right?
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I think we'll leave it completely fine, I mean, you have iron tales to do live music across the street, anyway.
Until later?
Yeah, I, no, I think we'll leave it completely fine.
Oh, they close at ten?
I think we should leave it to just acoustic only, no drums.
We gotta let the little man play.
Who has some to talk?
He may wanna look into that noise ordinance, just so you're aware of what it is, okay, there is one.
Be over.
And uh, 'cause they're our neighbors and back there, so we wanna avoid.
Any issues?
Any issue, thank you.
I know you said you haven't done an event like, for a town of this scale, but do you have any estimates as to how many people you expect or if there's gonna be any traffic concerns or anything like that?
Uh, we're not, we're estimating probably at two hundred people. That, that's our, our guess, we've done some big shows like, down at the um, airport, um, and we're usually two, maybe, but maybe because it's, it's, it's a new venue, maybe, it would be wonderful if it was more, but it's not gonna be like, a thousand people. Probably a couple hundred people.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Sign, motion?
Oh, okay. Make a motion?
Making a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion first of all.
Make a motion to approve the mass gathering permit for Tony Flahin for May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at the Acton Fairgrounds.
Second.
All in favor?
Then come in anytime in the next couple days and I'll get you a copy and.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we hope you all come. It'll be a lot of fun.
Now that's something I go to.
That's right up my alley.
Oh, yeah, it sounds like a great event. Were you able to get this going?
Yeah, it's up and running. I keep wiggling it so it stays live.
Okay, what are we, a school committee request?
Judy.
Sorry, I'm wishing my boy gets a book tonight.
I'm just trying to get him out on time.
Yeah, the Acton School Committee has to be put on the agenda tonight to request a special town meeting so that we can transfer some funds for some much-needed projects. We were kind of hoping that the audit would have been done a little bit sooner, so we could have scheduled this a little bit sooner. What, what, you probably know, we have a long-term planning committee where we have projects that are planned, and sometimes these kind of double up on each other. And we have quite a few things on, on the table right now that really need to be done fairly soon, some of them very soon. You know, we're upgrading our security, we're working on our security, and there are some things there that need, need a lot of attention. And I know we have a town meeting coming up in April where we could put these things off till then, but some of them really should be done before then. And I'll let John explain some of that. Our feeling about this is that in our audit, when we got our audit back, we had, we had a good amount of excess in our undesignated fund. And it makes total sense to the school committee to use these funds to take care of these projects that are inevitably gonna come up for the taxpayers to pay for. And so if we use these funds to pay for these projects, we won't have to put them in future budgets for the taxpayers to have to pay for. And as you know, the school committee has always been very willing to give back to the town. In fact, over the last six or seven years, we've given back to the town over a million dollars in, for ta, for tax relief, for the, for the people of the community. And we still will be able to give some back to the town this year, even, even if these projects get approved. But we'd like to have a special town meeting so that we can present these to the townspeople and get them to vote on allowing us to transfer this money over so that we can get going, because some of these things take a lot of time just to get lined up and to get the, get them in. Maybe Mr. Ross can fill you in a little bit more on that.
Excuse me. Thank you, John Ross, Superintendent Principal, Acton School Department. I think Judy said it well. I would have much rather we've been in front of you in October, but we didn't have the audit, and we can't come in front of you with numbers that aren't real. So the numbers just came in as to what is there from the FY twenty-three budget. And as Judy said, we'd like to exercise the opportunity to have the town vote that we can get some of these projects done. But like I said, even January, last day of January to me is super late to jump on this. Hope would have been October, November, and so here we are.
You have a list of, I'm sorry, I was just asking if you had a list of projects, because I wanted to give it to them.
Sure, I can read them, and I, I have a copy. These are, these projects came over the last five years. We have a five-year plan for Long Range Planning Committee. Some have been done, you know, some, when they get done, the things, those items come right off our list. We have a project, a total amount, and a date by which we'd like to put it in our local budget. So clearly, we've moved all of these over to the excess funds of FY twenty-three so that we don't need to create a liability for the future for projects at the school. I can hand these out after I sit down, I'll, I'll give you copies. But a kitchen dishwasher, two convection ovens, kitchen floor replacement, sidewalks, middle school roof maintenance, security doors in the fifty-seven wing, that's the only place left in the building that has wooden doors. Everything else has a fire, a fire door to each classroom. Security upgrades to include keyless entry, moving the buzz-in from the, from the inside set of doors to the outside, so there's two set of security doors to get in. Talked with the chief, AEDs, we could use, he's gonna be doing a bulk order, so we jumped on that to get a couple of AEDs put in place. A teacher to include the salary and benefits for first grade, which we have in place. Capital projects reserve account to, that's just to reestablish that, that reserve account. And a fuel reserve account as well. Those are the items that I have. Very good, they got, they got passed out?
Yes, yep, thank you.
A fuel reserve account?
I'm gonna defer to Paula on that one. What, the fuel reserve account for ten thousand seven oh six? We used it. We drew down on it, Mr. Mitchell. Yeah.
I have a question about the, I know I've been in some of the meetings about the entry. Is that for the, I know you said you wanted to move the intercom out, is that, that's one of the projects on here?
Indeed.
So I, to my job, I go through a lot of schools, middle schools and high schools, so you're counting. Most of them have a similar setup with Acton. Is that something that needs to be done this year? Is that something that can be pushed later down? Because like, I think at Saco Middle School, Bonny Eagle, most of them have where you can enter the first door, and then they have the intercom, just like Acton on entry does.
Right, while, while we've really been focusing on our Alice training and safety and your investment with me with law enforcement and working with everybody in the community, and what we've done with our programming so far, I very much would like to see that happen as soon as possible. Just that one extra set of doors buys you some time.
Also, also, haven't we, haven't we added the extra protective covering to the outside?
That's already paid for.
To the outside doors.
Correct.
So that's why we have that extra protection covering on the outside doors that we don't have on the inside doors.
Another question, I guess, is are these all essentially, if you had to, budgeting, whatever, if there's ones that you couldn't do, do you have a list of ones that you think could be pushed to later on in the year?
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you. I actually, prior to this meeting with the school committee, not today, but over the weekend, knowing we're coming in, we've already removed some things that probably could wait. That's why we're coming to you with the bare bones of what we'd like the citizens to take a look at.
Yeah, because we're, we're, we're looking right now, the numbers we're looking at on our budget sheets, you know, we're, is, this could be a large increase on our expenditure, expenditures this year. So we're, we're hoping that you guys are gonna give us a lot of money back. So don't look like it, so.
You were, I remember the meeting when we did, and you were the happiest people in the room.
Yeah, 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 so, okay.
I, I think ideally, given that we don't yet know what the school is gonna be presenting as a budget, the town is trying to figure out its budget, we're trying to forecast what we think the implications will be on the tax rate, and I gotta tell you, we've got pressure. And so one question is, not knowing where the school budget is likely to come out, and I understand you're still in that process, so that's fine, that's sort of an unknown that we, we need to grapple with here, because we're gonna be setting our school budget, we're dealing with the warrants tonight and over the next meeting or two, so those are gonna be finalized before we've seen the school budget. And ultimately, they have to come together because they both fund from the tax rate. When you, when you see this list of projects, I understood that some of them were ones you felt were needed immediately, and you were not comfortable waiting until April. Which projects are those?
Andy, would you mind if I, I asked Andy to come down tonight? Because he's already done some of the bidding process and understands contractors and when they're available.
The reason I ask.
Right, I'm gonna ask him to answer that question for you.
From my perspective.
Yeah.
It would be best if we were able to, given that we're gonna have a town meeting in two months. And basically, it's, it's a meeting on money. We're approving the budgets and for the taxpayers to be able to see everything at one time so they can make decisions around all these various priorities that we have. So from my perspective, it would be best to wait till then.
Oh, I understand.
If, if there were some that you absolutely have to have now, I guess that's what I'd love to hear about.
Okay.
Understand how, how big are those, and is there some way that we could kind of move those forward and leave the bulk of this for April? That's my thought. That's what I'm trying to.
No, I'm following you, Tom. Like I mentioned before, I would have loved to have had this conversation in October, and it's now almost February.
I appreciate that. I don't know how others feel about it.
And I, yeah, and the request is just simply to have the special town meeting to talk about the details at that meeting, of course, with the citizenry to then respond to the request.
I mean, the sidewalks, you wouldn't be doing that until.
I'm gonna let, yeah.
April anyways.
I'll let the guy that knows more than I do talk about that one.
Okay, so when we, when we sat down, we, I mean, we've been working on this list for quite some time, as Mr. Ross mentioned. I have been working in, in the last couple of months, meeting with various contractors for each one of these projects. The sidewalk, as David had just mentioned, for example, the contractors are already booking for the summer months. A lot of these projects that seem like we, we could wait for the planning process, by the time we wait, where we've, we've lost our window when school's not in session during summer. The security doors in the fifty-seven wing, for example, there's an eight to ten week lead time on just ordering once we commit. So we had to take a look at the timeline and see what actually works best for school and disruption of, of the programming and whatnot. So all of the things that you see that we have been narrowed down to this list, most of them have time-sensitive restraints attached to them. That's why we're here this evening.
As I understand what you said, time-sensitive, in order to meet this next window that you have. And, and so I, were all these projects in your capital budget for this year?
Most of this were, were in our LRP plan, which Mr. Ross said.
Were they for this year or were they in out years?
They were projected out, some of them.
Staggered.
They were staggered. And so. Are there any life safety issues in here?
Possibly the doors.
Possibly.
In the fifty-seven, and, but.
The AEDs, yes.
And the AEDs. But I don't see how waiting until the April meeting, if we're going to still be asking the town to just transfer that money from our undesignated funds, if we're gonna be asking the same thing in April, that we're asking you to have a special town meeting for us now, why would that make a difference to wait just till April to ask for the very same thing? Because this, what we're asking for is to spend money that we have now so that we won't have to ask the town later in our budgets. We won't have to ask the people to come up with the money for them later because we have the money in our accounts now that we can do these, so we won't be having to ask them in future years to come up with this money. We won't have to be building our budgets up bigger. We'll be able to contain our budgets in the, in the future years. I mean, that's the whole point of, of us bringing this request to you tonight.
I.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think throughout part of the discussion that we had about combining the town meeting with the school budget was the idea that having those separately, we, you know, especially with like the school budget, means we didn't see a huge attendance, and we want one to make sure that as many people can vote on these issues because it's gonna impact the tax, right? And we want the townsfolk to be able to say, yes, I voted for this. Another thing is, is like, come over, as Tom or David said, that we want voters to be able to see the full package. If you kind of separate it, then they're making a decision, and then when they come to the town meeting and they've already voted, and so they don't, they not realize the full impact, whereas if you have everything together, they see the full package. They see the full impact that it's gonna have next year.
But this isn't gonna impact the tax rate. This is not gonna impact the tax rate.
It doesn't impact it for one, one reason. If this is surplus money, this four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that's money that's not coming back to us to offset our tax, the entire tax. So it does end to a point. The only concern I have is it's, I thought, when I, you guys would come up here, I thought it was coming, you know, you were, you were looking for like a hundred and some thousand dollars. I didn't know it was almost a half million dollars, so I, I, I gotta do some thinking on this one here.
I don't. You, you've had a rather substantial surplus for the last number of years. The extent to which you have high priority items here, could you not fund those out of your existing funds?
So we have a, a plan that Paula and I put together over three years where we can only have a certain amount by state law in our reserve account, not reserve, but unassigned fund balance for the school. So to look at that, you're right, Tom, we do need to draw down on some of that, and that is our plan with some future budgets. But these, these particular expenditures were outside of that.
No, as I recall, and, and Paula can help me here, I think you had about a six hundred thousand dollar surplus this past year. So that would suggest to me there's some level of surplus, because you had surplus not only last year, but you've had them for the last number of years. So it tells me that embedded in your budget is a level of funding that is not being spent and is falling to the bottom line and going into your reserves. And so I guess what I would ask you to do is take a look at your current budget and the extent to which you continue to have a surplus. You may be able to fund this out of your current budget and still, you know, stay within your budget limits, your authorized limits. I think that says it.
Our budget, if you look at it, our budget is eighty, eighty percent of our budget is contracted. So we can't adjust that. We can't do anything with that. Some of the reasons that our budgets, we have surplus, falls back into the areas of special education. If we have a child that's in an out-of-district place, we can, we're able to bring them back into district for education, and that takes a, a big expense off. If we have two or three high school kids that move out of district, then that brings quite a few thousand dollars back into our budget. There are a lot of factors like that that, that fit into it. The actual amount of money that we have to actually work with within our budget is like twenty-some percent. And that's not very much to play with as far as trying to figure out how we can cut down on things. And we don't want to increase our budget because we, we're trying to keep the increase as low as we can. And this, to me, this is a no-brainer that we have this money that we can use now that the town won't have to raise later. They won't have to raise it later. We won't have to ask for it later. These are all needs that the school has, that we're planning on and trying to figure out how we can pay for them. And now we have this money. We still plan to turn some money back over to the town. We're just not gonna turn over as much as you would love to have us turn over, but we're still gonna turn some money back over. And as far as, as far as having the impact on the taxes, it's not gonna impact the taxes really. It's not gonna impact the taxpayers because they've already paid for this. They've already paid for this.
Have you had an opportunity to do a forecast of your budget for the current year? And if so, is there money, are you planning on a surplus at all? Because last year you weren't either, but you ended up with.
We ended up with unexpected revenue. When we, it's a couple of things. One, we ended up with unexpected revenue from the state last year that we did not anticipate a year ago, this date. The other one is, yes, there is unassigned fund balances in the school, and Paula and I have developed a budget that we need to draw down on to keep that budget reasonable for the town. So yes, there's placeholder money there. And the three-year plan brings us within compliance of the state. So it, it is a perception and reality that the money is there, and the school's coming forward to say, we have a plan to use that, and we have a three-year plan to do that. My question for you is, I just wanna make sure I get the process right, because we've been doing secret ballot for so long, I've forgotten, I haven't forgotten the town meeting process, but it's been a while. So I think I'm here, I heard Daniel say, can we bring this to the sixth and just do it all there? And I, I respect and understand, that is what we talked about when we were around the table. But tonight is our request not just to have a special town meeting and then bring this to them, bring the weeds. I call this the weeds, the numbers and all the information to the town at that meeting. Is that, was that the right process?
For these, for these items.
Right, okay, so we're simply requesting a date to have a special town meeting for these items tonight. Okay, thank you.
Anything? One question for, for the school. Do you have any, kind of a loaded question, but do you have any idea how much money you might be turning back this year?
This year?
Rough, well. Like I said, it's a.
Right, no, I get it, yeah.
It's a loaded question, but.
It's a, it's a loaded, it's a loaded question because, number one, we don't know what our revenues are gonna be. And that's really what, last year, what boosted, boosted up our, our access was we got more revenues back from the state than we had expected, so, in June, so.
How much was that? Yeah, it was a hundred and sixty thousand.
Hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm sorry, that was out of a six hundred thousand dollar surplus, so it was part of it, but there was much more going on than that.
Right, so. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure we will be giving some back to the town. So, but I'm sure, I'm sure we will be giving some back to the town.
Can I get that clarification? I was certain if you were asking, do we know what this fiscal year we're living in might look like when we hit June 30th? Or were you asking, what might we draw down on for our budget for FY '25, which we're currently working on?
Whatever year you're gonna, you would turn back, turn money back.
Which would be June 30th, yeah. We're only six, well, almost seven months now, February versus tomorrow. So, it'd be very, budget to actuals would be tough, yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking. Yeah, roughly 140 maybe?
Well, I think what he's asking, if you have $600,000 now, when you wanna spend $465,000. That's what he's asking.
And it's spending $465,000.
Total amount in the FY '23.
Right, he's asking, so it was $600,000 at the end of FY '23?
So, Paula, do you have the exact number for FY '23 in the, that was in the audit? Because that's the number we needed when we came here.
So, 602 less $465,000.
And then you backed this out and then, right. So, we're not, when we came, I think it's inverted of what Dave was hoping. You were hoping we'd ask for 100 and spent, and you'd get four and more. Kind of like looking at four and you're looking at 100 and a half. I think it's just the inverse of what you brought up earlier. That's all I'm saying.
Did the math.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what I had thought, I just wanted to hear it. Yeah. Go ahead.
I was just, because I think we had somebody who had a hand up.
We'll take some public comment. Oh, you guys have some questions for these guys or?
Actually, one question goes to them and one goes to town.
Obviously, I would assume that we would want to attend to any life safety issues. And I'm wondering how much of the total that represents and if the school department could attend to those within this year's budget. And if not, then obviously that's an issue for the select board to consider. And I understand what the school board is saying about, you know, this isn't gonna cost the town anything. But it is, because we have the cost of a special election. And so, I'd like to know how much roughly that would be.
I mean, the special, it's a special town meeting. So, you know, in all fairness, I mean, you could get out from under, for a couple hundred dollars. I mean, you're, you know, you're going, that's not a big expense because you've got, you know, one ballot clerk, I'm on salary. You've got some printed materials. So, it's really, that piece of it's minimal.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more of a referendum.
I mean, if it was an election, that would be different.
Thousands, so that's where I was going. Surely, a few hundred dollars isn't a big deal.
Right.
Thank you.
Election, you're right, would be different.
Any other questions?
Hi, Joey Spaxi, Norton Finance. In the list of projects, I was trying to write them down at the same time. It's something about a roof over something.
Middle school roof maintenance.
Yeah, I thought the roof was done this year.
That section was not.
It was a different section. Okay, I thought the whole roof was done on that. And I know at one point, now you're talking about dishwashers and oven. In the kitchen, the, is it the condenser for the freezer was gone?
Convection oven?
Was that repaired?
Two convection ovens.
Two convection ovens. Okay, I'll have to look at my notes from the last meetings.
We can give you the list, we have the list, we can give you. You don't have to take notes.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we're talking, we're looking at 450,000?
465.
455?
406.
I'm gonna say there's not much difference between the two. And, but it's...
What do you mean, not much difference between, which two?
Between 450 or 455.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's actually 465, 406.
65.
You can have my copy if you'd like.
That's okay, thanks, thanks. But I think it's still important to find out how much is coming back to the town. I understand what they're saying. And I understand the safety issues because nothing ever happens here. And that's how it does. And I understand that, all for that. And, I mean, other questions, AEDs in and of themselves are not expensive. But, have we needed them in the school? Has there been a time?
We have one by the gym.
I know we have one. Have we ever used it?
We have not used that AED, but...
That's great, but, you know.
When you want it, you want it.
Yeah, but when you want it, you want it, absolutely. I mean, you know.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but when the fire chief, I didn't realize he was moving forward with that plan. But, he, if you decide to do that, the town hall and the rec, we need a couple of as well. We need to get on that.
Yeah, but, I mean, I know those, my husband actually teaches the use of those. The training, yes, so I know those. But, I don't know, for finance, we'd wanna know what's coming back. You know, what, how much exactly, what's coming back? Because, and I understand, this money's been there and it's been accumulating a few years. So, the town people have already done it with their taxes. But it's still gonna have an effect at the end. It's still gonna have a big effect. And what the effect on the school budget altogether would be. It wouldn't be great if they could do it in their own budget right now. I think that would be the way to go, but anyway.
They're not sure they can.
One thing that people tend to forget, that roof they wanna look at over the middle school has been there for 35 years. And if that does start leaking, you're looking at a lot more expense. We went through that years ago over the 78 building. That was leaking, it was left. And we had to replace a bunch of plywood and tear the insulation out. And the expense was half again as much it would have been if it been addressed in a timely manner. That dishwasher that they wanna replace was brand new in 1978. That's when it was purchased. When they did their new, that addition back in 89, 90, they didn't buy a new dishwasher for the kitchen, they just moved that one in there.
I don't think anybody on the board has any doubt that what Mr. Ross and the school board is putting forward needs to be done. It's whether or not it needs to be done.
Next two months.
Next month or in two months.
Yeah.
We're just, that's the question we're having here.
I would, I'll say the same. There's nothing on this list that, quite frankly, I have a concern about. I'm sure they've gone through, made their assessments and these are all appropriate projects to be doing. It is simply a matter of timing. Timing, to me, would, I think it's more, it's a better process for the citizens to be able to see all of the expenditures in one setting as opposed to breaking it up. Half a million dollars is not inconsequential. Have it all done in one meeting, the town meeting, so that people can clearly understand what they're voting for, what the impact is gonna be on taxes, et cetera. And so, I'm suggesting that we simply wait until the planned April town meeting as opposed to doing one now, which would probably be in March by the time we get it set?
Well, you could probably do it the middle, end of February if you wanted.
Okay, end of February. So, we're talking about four to six weeks. And I say, you know, why can't we just do it in one setting?
I appreciate that, Tom. I just given some explanation about some of this stuff that some people don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I trust them. I assume these are all appropriate, necessary things to do. That wasn't, I just wanna clarify, that was not my issue.
I mean, the sidewalks are a safety issue.
Sure.
The wooden doors are a safety issue. This is all stuff that, I mean, the school's been very responsible in where they've spent their money. And I just want to say I support what they wanna do.
I don't think it's a matter of whether or not we support it. I think it's a matter of making sure that the majority of townsfolk, as possible, have their voices and their say in it. I think, at least that's my perspective. I support every single one of these. I mean, there's a reason why I picked the school committee as the first committee. I wanna be a liaison because I believe as a product of that school system, my niece, my nephew, I believe in everything that they do. But I also wanna make sure that as many folks in town have their voices heard. And that means making sure all these are gonna be where more people, the most people are gonna be able to vote on these matters.
So, when we have our town meetings, we are asking the town to raise money for stuff. That's what our town meetings are for. When we go with our school budget, we say, we're asking you to raise money for our teachers, raise money for our tuition. We go through all the little things that we have to go through. This, we are not asking the people to raise money for. We are asking the people to give us permission to transfer money that we already have in our account, in our undesignedated account.
You can do that anyways. Even, you could pull that out of your undesignedated fund in April, can't you?
No, we can't, I can, I can help with that. And that was one of the questions I was gonna have. If the wind's blowing the way I see, it looks like you may not support the request. So, I was gonna ask, so how do we, how do we, well, I don't know, I'm just reading, you know, I'm guessing. I'm just trying to figure out, how does that happen? Because Judy's right, the town meeting would be, you know, each article, I think we have about 19, and each one's raised and appropriated for that article. And we'll have a budget and a budget book that explains everything. But in this case, there's unassigned, there's an unassigned fund balance for the school. But the school committee cannot take action on that unassigned fund balance without the citizenry voting for the school committee to put their hands on it. Once it's in those accounts that I put in the chart, it can only be used for that. So, I was just kind of wondering how, I don't know, because I haven't seen, how would that happen if, if it was on the six? Would it be a separate meeting? Would it be?
No, they would just be change of warrant articles. So, it would ask the voters to, you know, expend X amount of the unassigned fund balance to either create the reserve account or to put it in a particular reserve account that already exists. I mean, it's, you know, they're just asking, I mean, you're right, you have to ask to move the money from your unassigned fund balance to that account. You're not raising and appropriating, you're just asking them to move it, so.
Which is what we would do if we had a special town meeting. It would be the same language, right? But it would be, but it would be separate of the budget process when everybody's there from town.
It would be just, it would just be the different, a warrant article would just be written differently. I mean, it's all about how the wording of the, you know, it's either to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or to see if the town will expend out of the unassigned fund balance. One raises and appropriates for taxes, one just allows you to spend.
So theoretically, there might be 19 school articles for the FY '25 budget that people need to anticipate. And then there's about, what, maybe a half dozen things there?
Could be one article. You could do that one article. What I'm trying to get to here, John, is I'm gonna get right down to brass tacks here, okay? You have a $600,000 surplus supposedly in your budget, okay? From the people sitting on the other side of that camera, they see $465,000 get spent before that point. It looks like you're just trying to spend down your fund balance, you know, get it gone, okay? That's what it kind of looks like, okay? I will, I plan on voting for all these, okay? But the problem is, is if we do a month before we actually have our meeting, it just doesn't make a lot, it does, I don't think it makes sense because it looks, well, I wouldn't say nefarious, but it does look odd that you would do it right before your town meeting.
I just need to go back to my opening comment. Well, I loved to have done this in October. We just got the, and this was as soon as we got the real numbers, I said, we need to talk to Jennifer about getting this on your agenda because we finally have numbers. That's all. Just as a contractor, you know what Andy said, it was just a matter of timing.
No, no, and it puts us in a really tough spot here because, like I said, I believe all this stuff should be done. You've got the money to do it. It's just whether or not you do it a month before our town meeting. That's, that's the problem.
I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Yeah, if we were still at the, you know, middle of June, town meetings and whatnot, it should be a no-brainer.
Oh, yeah, because it wouldn't affect anything to us.
Right, right. But, you know, it'd be, you know, two and a half months.
Board have a decision.
And I do support everything on this, so.
Amanda Cobb, I'm just, I just wanna clarify, you're putting money that we have in this budget at a meeting for next year's budget so that, it's kind of confusing for the taxpayers, I would think, to make sure they understand that the money is already in a different budget. And I, you know, I would personally...
The money's not in a budget yet.
No, 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 no. Personally, as a taxpayer, I would rather deal with a separate meeting because it's not gonna be the budget that we're creating for the next school year. It's, it, because it's like to keep them separate.
The town meeting has warrants to cover, to develop and approve the budget, the operating budget. But there are also warrants in there to appropriate monies from reserves for capital purposes, which is really what we're doing here. And so, those are routinely covered at the annual town meeting, both of those. There's creating a budget for the next coming year. There's also, let's spend some of our surplus reserves for capital or one-time items, which is what this list is. So, those things go on, they'll go on whether this is done at that meeting or not. There'll be other items that will expend money from reserves.
Right, but you did say if this happened maybe two months apart, that it would, you would be willing to have two separate meetings. So, it doesn't have to be all at one meeting necessarily.
I think, at least from my perspective, is just the fact that it is gonna impact next year's budget. Like, we're talking about how much we can give from, if I could just finish, surplus from the town and the school to offset the tax rate. The amount of money that get back is gonna impact that. And voters should be aware of how, they should see next year's budget, what that is gonna do, and then be able to make the decision. Do we wanna give all this money that the school has, but you're asking, back to the school? Do we think, like you folks said, it's up to the votes to decide, is this a better deal for us where we're not gonna be spending money down the line? Or do we think it's better to offset taxes? And that's why I think it goes together because they're gonna see all that information to make that informed decision. I think that's really important.
Okay, and my one last comment, as a taxpayer, is all the discussion about the excess money that the town had and money being invested, you know, to be worried about less than half a million coming back from the school when the town already had multiple millions excess kind of seems a little nitpicky. I mean, I know we've always given, the school has always given money back because they could, but the budget's also been pretty tight.
I suggest you stick around for the budget item on the agenda. And you'll hear about all of those resources. Our existing reserves, what's being requested for funding this year, the impact on the tax rate. I think that will lay it all out for you. And maybe you'll have a better understanding of what our concerns are here.
Maybe we should have done that before we had this part of it. Because it's, we're going to every, every department. And we're asking, we're looking at maybe possibly cutting 30, 40, 50, 50,000 here, 100 there. We're doing that for a reason. We have a boatload of money in the bank, but we plan on using some of that money to start offsetting taxes. But that money that we have in the bank, at this rate we're going at, when you're talking a million dollars every year that we're going on, up on our expenditures, that money we have in the bank, if we start using it to offset, won't last long. Not at the rate we're at. So, when you say it's $465,000, doesn't sound like a lot of money to you. But when you start bigger...
That's not, that's not what I said.
But, but we're trying to look at the long term here. And we're making everybody else do the same thing. Right now, we're looking at what? What would be the percentage of, put it this way, our tax rate would go up, go up over 10, 11% right now with what's coming through.
Without the school.
Without you guys, without you guys. So, that's why, it sounds like we're being big meanies up here, but you don't see the other side of it where we're seeing all these other big numbers come through. We got a million dollars we've gotta shave off somewhere. And you're talking about spending $465,000 next month. So, that's why we're concerned, that's all. Judy?
But these are funds raised for the school, do you realize that?
Yes, we do, we do know that.
Okay, so...
And we, I think we, we pretty much, what we, the consensus is here, we're just worried about the timing. It's that one month that we're concerned about. And whether or not it's a good idea, we haven't made that decision yet. I guess we gotta talk about it. I honestly, I didn't, I didn't expect to see this. This wasn't the numbers I was expecting to see, so.
For the cost of $200 for a special town meeting, we've been told over and over again from the school board, you know, if you need something, you know, you just have to go to the selectman and ask for a special town meeting and you can have it. So, that's what we did.
I think, just, I just wanna kind of respond to what you just said. In regards to that, these funds were raised for the school, but these funds were raised for last year's budget for specific projects that you said you need the funds. You didn't, so that was an informed decision the taxpayer made when they voted upon these. an informed decision the taxpayer made when they voted upon these. Now that you didn't use them for your specified budgets, it's up to them to decide, do we want to use it for a different project? Because they were not used for what we voted upon. And I agree, we do say if the select, you know, if you have a problem, come to the select board. But this is multiple at once. And I think we see some things like, the fire, fire chief came because they had an issue with a pump on the engine. That was one item that we were voting on. This is a couple items. It's not just kinda one project.
Charlie?
I, I think I have it down to two questions in my head. One is, in years prior, let's say the last five or ten years, has there been any transfers from undes, the school, I'm only talking school, from the undesignated fund into the active proposed budget to balance the budget out?
For the school?
Yes.
For the school.
Yes, they have.
Yeah, every year. Every year, about how much?
One year it was, the year of COVID, it was like seven hundred and some thousand.
Right.
But it usually like two hundred thousand.
Two, I think it was two hundred last year.
Two or three hundred thousand dollars.
So potentially between what you're requesting to be transferred and what is typical, which this may not be typical here, but would possibly wipe that undesignated completely out?
No, we can't. I can get up if you want. It'd be easier. We may have to get in the plan a little bit, follow some of the-
Well, if you're asking for four hundred and typically transfer two hundred.
Sure, sure, sure. So there's some state laws around, and some rules around Maine Department of Ed, on how we can use undesignated funding, and how much we can have in an account, a percentage. And that is, I'll be specific, is it seven to twelve right now?
Right now, it's five to nine.
Five to nine, and then the next year it is?
After next year, we can only have five to ten.
See, it recedes. So this is part of the plan on, because we always need that undesignated fund to offset the yearly budget.
Right. And that's, that was my-
You got it. This was, this was what's left over from twenty-three.
Yeah, I, I just, I just, that was my memory. I just wanted someone else. Cause I'm not a big fan of special town meetings. And there's an awful lot of them in this town. But along with what they said, this doesn't really seem much different than what we did last year, having a special town meeting so they could do the LED lighting. It's all done within the current school budget year. And the only thing they're doing, they're asking to go and transfer some money to cover something that they feel that they could do in this current year. Now, what I would wanna know is, what all is in your five-year plan, your long-range plan? And are these the really big priority items that you think you can get? Or is this something that can actually stay in the five-year plan and just be worked into the rest of the school? Those are my only questions.
Okay. Well, what's up? What do you guys think? Anybody wanna make a motion? What, what is the date that you were projecting?
Jennifer, I, I think Judy and Jennifer talked about the number of days that would need to expire.
Yeah, I mean-
So you want this like ASAP?
Yes, that's what.
And I think that falls on municipal as to when you can-
Yeah, I mean, the conversation that, that Judy and I had, I mean, you know, Maine Municipal will allow you to have a, a special town meeting as little as seven to ten days. But they reference, and this is nothing on the school committee, they reference the word emergency, you know? I mean, the, longer we can notify, you know, closer to fourteen to twenty-one days feels healthier and safer when legal's giving you an opinion, so that, you know, your taxpayers aren't saying something. So, you know, legally, you could do-
Any other stuffs an emergency.
Right. So, I mean, that's where, I think Tom or somebody got the, you know, the end of the month. Cause what we would look for, you'd have to draft the warrant, we'd have to have recommendations from two committees. So we're looking at two weeks into February before that. And then, so I think that's where the end of February came from.
Last week in February. Last week in February.
Somewhere around there, and that's different mood.
And we're looking at-
April sixth.
April sixth.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
A motion, fine.
Dan, you wanna make a motion on this?
I'm, I'm still trying to think, um.
You can always tape a little week if you're not sure what you wanna do.
But tape a long week is just gonna delay it.
Delays and pushes it out.
Let's, let's just-
Make a motion on it.
I, I guess this is just what would be, let's say we did approve this town meeting, what are, what are our thoughts? Like, what are?
Well, I mean, there's, there's two ways to look at it. You know, we can delay it, delay it, do it on April sixth, or we can have this town meeting, and the voters are gonna, they're gonna vote on it anyways. But on our part of it, it doesn't, I mean, it kinda looks like, how do I put it?
Almost looks like they're either gonna, they're either gonna spend it April sixth, or they're gonna spend it the end of February.
Well, no, well, that's what the plan is. I, I believe it'd be voted on April sixth anyways.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why, you know, that's one, one reason why I, I think having a special town meeting is kinda silly, because they're gonna get it anyways.
Right.
You know, at least put it through.
My only concern, like, is just making sure, cause I've seen some of the, the attendances at, like, in the past of the school, these school meetings, is I just wanna make sure as many people are actually gonna vote on this. That's my only concern. Other than that, I, I wanna, I want, I'd love to make a motion to accept this, but I'm just worried, is there gonna be a good attendance that when people see this budget, that if we make these decisions that come taxes, and they look back, and they, how are we gonna hear people saying, I didn't see this, I didn't vote on this? That's my concern. I don't, I don't see anything nefarious. I have no faults with these. I just wanna make sure that when it comes time to, when we get our taxes next year, when our budget is approved, that people are not gonna come and say, like, we didn't have the opportunity, we didn't have the time, we didn't get the advertisement. If I could be guaranteed that there's gonna be a ton of effort, and that we're gonna see a good turnout, I would a hundred percent say, let's, let's do this. I don't know, I don't know if anyone can attest to that, or quell those concerns of mine.
I could get a moment, go to sign, it'd be better. So, other than the LED lighting in the eight years I've been here, I don't think we've had, I don't believe I've had a special town meeting on, on any, on anything with the citizens come and vote.
I believe that the LED lighting on that-
Did we? That was, you, you, you guys from the town.
That we were gonna run out of time.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a grant, we had to do it at a certain time. There was a time limit.
Okay.
That's why we did it.
That's the closest thing I've been involved in with you around money.
This is a lot different.
This is different. So my question, right. So my question, not having experienced this, what is your regular turnout for a special town meeting when the fire department asks for something? I, I don't know what it is.
He'd hate to see twenty people show up at a special town meeting, vote on almost a half million dollars, when in a month, you're gonna, we should have seventy, eighty people. We hope, we're hoping.
Is, is twenty people what you generally get for a special town meeting? I've never been to one. I'm only asking, cause I don't know.
See how many people in this room?
It's these people.
That's it.
So.
If I could, if I could know, and I, no, I can't, it's hard to do that.
There's no way, yeah.
We can't tell, we don't know.
That's my only concern. Other than that, I have no issues with doing, doing that.
We're all done, public comment, but we're gonna let you go, Ray. Go right ahead, cause we wanna get to the next thing. We got a lot of stuff to do here tonight.
All right. The only special town meeting that was attended by quite a bit of people here in town was when you guys were asking to be able to invest the excess funds that were here.
Yep.
Okay? Other than that, most of the town meetings that I've been here and attended have been not as well-attended as anybody would like, okay? I believe what was said is correct. There would be a little bit more of a confusion, being now that we're working on the budget for the upcoming year, versus allowing them to have a special town meeting to allow them to use these undesignated funds. The other aspect of it is getting in contact with the contractors. We know that, that is time-consuming, and I think that as a citizen of the town of Acton, they should be allowed to have this special town meeting.
Yep. You're gonna make it quick?
I'll make it quick.
Okay.
Okay. Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
To you.
Sorry, I was-
That was her, not me.
Ma'am, sorry, ma'am, ma'am. I was looking at Davey, cause I need him to read that. Go ahead.
Okay. I agree, this should happen. I think it would be very clear to people out there, not just in this room, if you, off the top of your head, and I know you can do it.
Love how you do that. Yes.
Right now, if you were to write the warrant for the expenditure of four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, blah, 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 how would you write it? As opposed to the town wants to raise?
I mean, just like, if you pull up, I mean, if you pull up the wa-
That's how you would do it.
Well, I would say to see if the town would vote to approve the expenditure of X amount of dollars. I need to know exactly where it's going, if it's going in one account or different accounts. But if you look at last year's warrant, you'll see the road assessment, the west shore drive, there are several articles that put money in unassigned fund.
So they know how it's gonna go. The other thing is, who thought we were gonna have the storm the other day we had? We're talking about February. That, that's risky, having a town meeting in the next four to five weeks.
With the weather on that day.
Yeah, it's risky.
Okay, we're gonna move on here. Thank you. Um, do I have any motions?
I guess just to move it forward, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this.
Do I hear a second? Move it forward to what?
That we approve their request.
Approve their request, to move forward to a special town meeting.
Did you give us the date?
Soon as, soon as, as it's possible. End of February, middle of February. And this is just to move it forward one way or the other, so.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Motion fails.
Okay.
What's that?
Motion fails.
Okay.
I would really, I should have made a motion to wait a week, but I really don't-
We wouldn't have known any more than, well, Shark Valley.
We can take it up another week.
They might reconsider it next week. They might reconsider it next week.
Yeah, I, I really want-
April sixth, it will be raised at the, this will be raised then, right?
Or maybe reconsider next week. They're thinking. I'll be in touch.
Problem is, John, I, I didn't expect this tonight. Four hundred sixty-five grand, I was figuring a couple hundred grand, something like that, you know? So, so I have to, before I go yay, I, I gotta, I gotta look at this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
You wanna take two seconds?
I can't, I couldn't read that. It's all fuzzy.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Yeah, let's take a, a five-minute break here, guys. I need a drink and, and a walk.
You wanna make sure this is up and ready?
Put the mud up off the floor, you're laughing.
Oh, you. A little scary.
Wow.
Okay. Guess we'll get this meeting back in order. Tom, do you wanna start out with the presentation there?
Well, there's been a lot of work going on to try to figure out, try to put together the town's budget for the coming fiscal year. And I'm gonna show you some schedules, show everyone some schedules. Many of the boards have not seen these, so everyone's first reaction. I'm gonna start with, cause I think there's some misperceptions about the status of reserves. And when I talk about reserves, I'm talking about total town reserves. Town reserves, school reserves, cause all of them are basically town funds. So I'm gonna go back to a point of reference where I had disclosed that we had significant levels of reserves. And in fact, we did. At the year ending June thirty, twenty-two, between the general fund at three million oh seventy-eight, and the school of a million three sixty, we had four point four million dollars in reserves. Now, what's happened to that? In fiscal year twenty-three, the year that ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, the town had a surplus of five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, a budget surplus. The school had a surplus of six hundred and seven thousand. So total town and school surplus was one million one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. However, in twenty-three, we appropriated from reserves for a whole variety of things. And we appropriated from the town's reserves, a million two, from the school's reserves, three ten. So that leaves us at June thirty, twenty-three, these are audited numbers, with the town having two million four hundred and forty-one thousand in reserves, and the school having one million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand in reserves. For fiscal year twenty-four, the year that we're currently in, as you may recall, last year when we set the tax rate, we said we would use five hundred thousand dollars to lower the, the tax increase. So there's five hundred thousand dollars. Also, in last year's warrants for this year, there were a variety of reserve spendings that amounted to two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So for a projected reserve balance for June thirty, twenty-five, the, the town now has a million six in reserves. The school for twenty-four, in the current budget, they, they offered to lower their budget, requests from the town, by two hundred thousand, cause they were gonna take it out of the reserves to pay for it. They've also indicated they wanna do that for twenty-five. So if that happens, they'll end up with a million two. So if nothing else changes, like what we just discussed earlier, we'll end up with two point nine million dollars in reserves. Now, the, the town and the school have a surplus policy. And the policy says that for the town, the reserve level is, is actually currently thirty-seven percent of the budget. And the school, the reserve level is currently twenty-three percent of the budget. The minimum amount that the reserves should have in them for the town is sixteen point seven percent of the expenditure base. And for the school, it's five percent. So that minimum dollar level is, for the town, we should at a minimum have seven hundred and seventy-three thousand in our reserves, and the school should have two hundred and seventy-eight thousand for a total of million oh one six. The excess is basically when you take that million six and back off the minimum seven thirty-seven, the town has at a minimum level of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, and the school has nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's if we took our reserves down to, per our policy, the minimum reserve, reserve level we want to have. Now, we also have a maximum. We don't want our reserves to exceed a particular threshold. In the case of the town, that's thirty-three percent, and in the case of the school, that's nine percent. If you go to the high level, there is a maximum reserve level of a million four fifty-seven, and we got a million six forty-six. So at the maximum level, we have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars left at the town level. At the school level, they have seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. So when you think about reserves, given our policy, the excess of what we believe our reserves levels are right now, is anywhere from combined, school and town, nine hundred and forty-four thousand to one million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So, gotta store those numbers away. Next, I wanna take you to a tax calculation. Yes. If it's quick, okay?
No, just real quick. When, when you said that the policy is sixteen percent minimum and thirty-three, thirty-three maximum, where did those numbers come from?
They are the town's adopted policy. And they were before my time.
Okay. Cause it's a, it's a really wide range, that's why I asked.
It is. And, and you'll find that towns have a wide range. Whether they're this range or not, when I've talked to other people, and for instance, Mark Roy, who's the auditor?
Ron Smith.
Ron Smith, and others, that's a pretty typical range.
Okay. It's taken from other towns, it's the average.
The, um, the, um, state says-
There's some that are lower, and probably some that are-
Now, the, the state says that we should have, what, three or four months of bills in reserve?
Yeah, that's the thirty-three percent.
That is the thirty-three percent? Okay. Cause that, you know, no one's ever said that before. So I had no idea what that would be.
That's a rule of thumb you hear a lot about.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
And before he goes on, I just see you guys taking notes, and that's, we're gonna email you this to you once they make their cut, so you'll get it all. So, you don't feel like you have to get it all.
So I don't have to-
I know, I see. I'm trying to text Joyce, but.
All right, thank you.
We'll get it over to you once they make their changes.
Now, this is a little, this is basically a summarized version of how we calculate the tax rate, okay? And the, the numbers there for twenty-three and twenty-four are there for, for comparison purposes. Down at the bottom is a tax calculation of six forty-five. And basically, we had revenues of a million four twenty-one from all of those sources right here. I hope people can follow the cursor as it's going along, so you can see where I'm talking about. And, and then here, the municipal budgets, the school budgets, some other things that were in there. And so we had nine point eight million dollars worth of cost to cover. A million four twenty-one came from other revenues. We were gonna, we spent five hundred thousand dollars of our reserves last year to keep the tax rate low. The school spent two hundred thousand dollars of its reserves to keep the tax rate low. So the net amount we needed to fund was seven million six hundred and eighty-three thousand. The value of all the property in town is a billion one hundred ninety-one million dollars. One divided by the other gives you a tax rate of six forty-five. That's what was on the tax bill. Based on what is currently in the budget that you're gonna be seeing, that tax rate looks right now to be about six ninety. That's a, about a seven percent increase. None of us are happy with that. So what we wanna do now is go through the budget, and, and you'll notice that that six ninety assumes that we're gonna spend five hundred, use five hundred thousand of our reserves to balance the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget. And you just went over, you, you just saw how much we have in reserves. So we'll be below the maximum level, but above the minimum level, if we did that. And the school has already indicated that they were planning to put up two hundred thousand of their reserves this year. If I were to take- If I were to take that out, that tax rate goes above seven dollars. So, okay. So, now, I think we want to get to the meat of it, which is the budget. And I'm gonna jump right up to the top.
Tom, can you do that? Could you go back one slide from where you just were?
On the tax calculation?
Yes, sir, where you were talking about how the policy is established.
Oh, the reserve.
One more up.
Yeah.
Now, the policy refers to that amount based on that fiscal year's approved budget.
Yeah, I actually used the prior year. I used the year-ended twenty-three expenditure amount, because that's the last audited expenditure amount.
That's the word that confused me. Because the policy says the approved budget amount, municipal budget, approved.
Okay, well...
So, that's why I was just confused. So, what you're calling the expenditures is what you're saying, was that right?
It didn't say what period to use for the approved budget amount, did it?
Yeah, for each fiscal year, you use those figures, those sixteen and thirty-three percent.
No, I understand, but I don't think it specified, I'll go back and look at it, that when you're calculating the reserve levels in fiscal twenty-four, that you use the approved budget for twenty-four, or you use the prior year budget.
Well, the example, when the policy was written in twenty eighteen at the bottom, was for the approved budget of twenty eighteen, and it did the math just like you did based on that.
Well, I'm happy to look at it. It might change the numbers slightly, but I think for, the overall magnitude is pretty much as it's displayed.
The expenditures were as opposed to approved.
I'll take a look at it, thank you. So, let's go to the whole budget. By the way, I want to make sure people at home can hear. So, we're gonna go to now our budget worksheet. And this budget worksheet reflects the submissions from department heads that have been reviewed by their liaisons. Some of them have reviewed by the committee. And I think the Warren Finance Committee has heard, has sat in as that was occurring. And we got the twenty-three, twenty-four approved budget, the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget, what the difference is and what the percentage increase is. And so, what I suggest we do is go through here. I don't want to spend time looking at a two thousand dollar budget. I mean, we'll have time to do that, but for our purposes tonight, which I think is to identify what kinds of cuts might we make to get that tax rate down. I have my own goal. We have not discussed it as a board, but I personally think a seven percent increase in taxes is too high. So, I'd like to see some reductions here. So, to my fellow board members, are we ready to go through this?
Let's do it.
Okay. So, the first increase of ten thousand dollars, that's because we now have a fifth selectman. So, it's a salary for an additional selectman. The next item, office assistant deputy. This is to take them to forty hours, Jennifer?
Correct.
For both of them?
Correct.
Is that really necessary for both of them, or can we do it for one of them?
Well, one of them definitely. And one of them has been giving a little support to the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
And then I did budget the other four hours, just in case we had elections, tax signs, or sometimes. And the office is open thirty-six, but if you want to take one down to thirty-six and leave one at forty...
Yeah, how much might that save, Jennifer?
Well, you figure four hours a week times fifty-two, I think I got the number. Forty-five, seventy-six.
All right, I'm gonna put forty-five, seventy-six in this column for any changes we might want to consider. Does this make sense, gentlemen? To my ad, David?
Yep.
Okay, fine. So, we'll flag that. I'm not gonna spend much time on the credits, because those are all good things. The mass purrs. There's a lot going on here.
Oh, right above it, you're on health insurance.
Oh, am I on the wrong line? Oh, health insurance.
Went up because of the finance director position.
Finance, there's a position in here, you'll see in a moment, for a finance director. It went up for that reason. Why don't we, when we get to the finance director, if there is any change there, we can come back and reconsider this. Unless someone's got some question with these credits. We have gone through the municipal management budget, which had a rather sizable surplus last year. And we have gone through and taken many of these budgets down to be more in line with what the actual expenditures were at the end of last year. So, that's why you're gonna see a lot of credits. Six thousand dollars.
Electricity, that was...
That may come down. I just got a note that the kilowatt per hour rate was going down thirty-five percent?
And that was an estimate on six months, so we...
Yeah, so we may be able to drop the electricity budget somewhat, because that was a big increase.
Trio and insurance. Print, I don't know if you saw the email that, I know you said two thousand, but the printing advertising town reports from fifty-two to five thousand, I don't remember why we increased that one, Tom.
Where are you, Jennifer?
So, I'm at the printing advertising town reports, it was thirty-two for approved budget. And we went up to five, but our, I think if you wanted, you could flatline that one. Eighteen hundred dollar increase.
I'm sorry, what line are you on? Point to me. Oh, that?
Yeah, I don't know why it went up on that.
So, let me, let me, let me go in here and I'll take out eighteen hundred dollars, okay?
Yeah, move it one over to the left, so we can...
And one up.
Oh, it's one over?
One over and one up.
Is that what it is? Okay. This is why they don't let me do this anymore. No, it's all right, it's all right. I'm gonna put eighteen hundred. Jesus, what did I do? You know, I wish I was back on the beach, that's all I got to say. There you go, all right? We know what it is.
We're gonna add a column.
Yeah, yeah. The town lawn care, did we take out the, from the existing budget?
Right, no. So, that, so this fifteen-nine comes from several places. I mean, you'll see the rec has a decrease. There are several places that have decreases, but we put this whole thing under municipal management. But where we paid the previous landscaper was at a building maintenance. But the number is quite different, because we included the rec field. So, if you're gonna take anything out of that, I wouldn't make it more than five thousand, because based on...
The contract used to be five thousand, wasn't it?
Forty-seven.
Yeah, forty-seven, close, yeah.
So, five thousand, so you could take...
Where's building maintenance, Jennifer? Help me out, what?
Building maintenance, it should be like a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar line. So, yeah, so go down right there. Up a few, right, yeah, about three more up.
Oh, okay. So, take five thousand out of there? Well, if, if... Oh, there you go. Okay.
That's what we used to pay for it. That's what we used to pay for it, we just added fifteen, we took five out of there.
Okay. So, I'm gonna keep going down. Now, you remember, seventy-five thousand is for a director of finance. And it's showing as an increase. But what it doesn't consider is, we approved the appointment of Mark Roy's firm last year, and that was funded from reserves last year. So, that's not really an increase. What was that budget, seventy, seventy-five last? Seventy-five, seventy-one?
I think it was sixty-five.
Oh, sixty-five, okay, it was sixty-five thousand dollars. So, there's like a ten thousand dollar increase, because this is our best guess as to what it might take to attract someone.
Plus benefit.
Huh?
Plus the benefits.
Plus the benefits, it's carried elsewhere, that's right. Where before we would...
So, if seventy-five turns into probably eighty-five or ninety.
Yeah, it could be, yeah. Any direction before I move on?
You had the consultant, did you want to talk about that?
Yes. Right now, you have a selectman, myself, playing a fairly active role in the town's finances. And I think, long-term, the town would be better served if it had sort of a resource that could provide some of that kind of expertise to the town. A director of finance, I think eventually could. But I think that may take a little time for that to happen. And so, I had suggested that we put a consulting line in here. Basically, Mark Roy has offered his services, he would be on retainer, more or less, and someone that we could call. So, that's what that line is for. Doesn't mean, we don't have any special uses in mind for it, but if we did, we would have that line available.
I think it would be good for the transition while you're finding someone to...
That's right. I don't think you want to rely on a selectman to do what's being done. And so, I think eventually you need to make sure that you have that capability, provided either in-house or from an outside source, so...
What would those do to you, Tom?
You know, let's say we need to develop a capital budget. We need to develop a long-range financial plan for the town. Mark Roy may be a resource, it doesn't have to be him, it could be someone else, may be a resource that could help us sort of think through that, and how to do that, and assist us with that. I think ten thousand is more than enough, but...
You want to lower it?
Yeah. What do we got, fifteen? Oh, fifteen, oh, I would lower that.
Yeah, the thing too is, sometimes, you know, if we use like our auditor in the past, we use him if we just stumble across, you know, bank records or something you just can't figure out, and it's not part of their contract to do, so we could call them a consultant for those things.
Okay, so let's lower it, for right now, let's lower it to ten. We'll see what might come of that.
I have a question. So, would this be like a temporary? Because I look at this new director of finance role, and I see that the idea bringing the levels that they're gonna be that expertise, we're not relying on an election of, you know, you coming back forever.
That's right.
But, so is this gonna be more temporary until we have that transition, or...
I just, I...
I think what you were saying before was, until that finance director is able to actually become what we need it to be, that's just gonna be kind of a temporary thing until...
That's right. It's belts and suspenders. In other words, it's just safety guards in place. If something comes up, we've got the money to deal with it. I know this board, they're not gonna spend it unless there's a real need to do it.
And you're planning on having this position filled day one of fiscal year?
With the director of finance?
Yeah.
We hope to start that search very soon and hopefully have somebody in place before the end of the fiscal year. And the reason we can do that is we have the money that was set aside for Mark Roy's firm. His services stopped twelve thirty-one. So, we have money in the budget that we can use to engage a director of finance, April first, whenever we're able to get someone. Okay?
I guess the question from that act would be, the board voted on giving that money to that firm.
Yeah.
So, basically, whatever is not being used, because it's not a long-term service, you're just gonna transfer that over to a director of finance?
Was the, was the warrant article written to Mark Roy or to a consultant firm?
I don't think it was for Mark Roy.
Was it?
It was for Mark Roy.
Was it?
Yeah.
All right, well...
So, we'll double-check it.
We'll have to, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. We'll make sure we don't run afoul of the legals.
We'll obviously fix that with the new warrant article.
Yeah, we could fix it at the town meeting if we need to, okay? Thanks, Ray. What else have we got? We've got a bunch of small credits here. I'm sorry, was there something?
You'd need a special town meeting for that, because it's current budget due.
Unless there's, unless there's cut somewhere else.
We'll figure it out. Okay? So, total general govern, had an increase of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. You can see where that's coming from. Seventy-five thousand of that was really, or sixty-five thousand was approved to come out of reserves. So, the real increase is ninety thousand dollars. And we just went over all those increases.
And we're looking at taking out maybe sixteen, seventeen.
Oh, health insurance was, I'm sorry?
And you're proposing possibly taking out of that sixteen, three, seven, six.
All right, so let's keep going. Fire department, they're talking about a eighteen thousand nine hundred dollar increase overall on a nine hundred and thirty-one million dollar budget. My only concern here is that we had a eighty thousand dollar surplus in the fire department for the year ending June thirty twenty-three. And we're increasing that budget now by an additional eighteen thousand dollars.
It is. This is with or without the three percent increase in...
That's without it, that's without the three percent. These increases do not include salary increases. We're dealing with that in total later on.
So, we're at, last year, last year's numbers were, uh...
Nine twelve.
Nine twelve or nine thirty-one? And then eighty thousand dollar surplus last year. So, honestly, at the end of the day, that line could be flatlined and still be roughly fifty thousand dollars left over, or less than, seventy thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty, sixty thousand.
Yeah, actually, yeah, yeah, sixty thousand.
Yeah.
What would you like to do, gentlemen?
Could you increase the size of the screen a little bit? Like down in the right corner, bottom right corner of your screen, there's like a plus button.
Right here.
Where over there?
There we go.
Whoa!
Okay.
We're gonna see some numbers now, can't we? Got front row seats.
We'll put it on the website, we'll get copies. But the idea tonight was for the board to make some decisions on what was moving forward and certainly get a copy.
All right. So, is there a suggestion as to what to do with the school? I mean, with the fire department?
I don't know why we couldn't flatline it.
Well, it only makes sense.
I mean, if they had eighty thousand dollars left last year, then...
And plus, you know, we're talking about putting forward a contingency thing there, so, you know, if you have an eighty thousand dollar surplus, but you increased from last year's budget eighteen thousand dollars, so in theory, if everything was stayed the same, you would have a hundred thousand dollar surplus this coming year, right?
Yeah.
If everything stayed the same, I was saying it will.
Yeah.
So, I would rather flatline that budget line and...
We ready to move on?
Wouldn't it be helpful if I had the fire chief here to...
Well, he left.
But he may not have known that you were doing this.
He did know we were doing this, everybody, all the departments do, Charlie. We let everybody know, that's what we're here for tonight.
Long as they knew.
Your flatlining has to be adjusted for pay increases and whatever the benefit package is.
So, with the pay increases of three percent, it's still not gonna come up to eighty thousand dollars.
No, but where, these increases that you're seeing here, basically, in this portion of the schedule, all the salaries are being held flat. And what we did at the very bottom was, we took the total salary base and were able to apply a percentage increase at that level, so that we can see if we do a two percent increase, what's it look like? Or a five percent increase. So, these increases are really for what I call the non-compensation component of the budgets.
Operating budget.
Yeah.
And just for the fire department, you don't know, or the fire chief don't know, what he's gonna have a calls or not. He could have an increase of calls on this previous budget.
And we're gonna have a contingency, we're gonna have... The problem we're having here, Robin, is we look through all these budgets that we've had, and we have some that have an eighty thousand dollar increase, some that have a hundred and eighty... Increase, excuse me, a surplus, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus in one department, eighty thousand in another department, and they all add up.
Yeah.
So, you know, the theory is, Robin, like the transfer station. If you ask for five hundred thousand dollars and you only use three hundred of it, you're under two hundred thousand dollar increase, but then you added more to your budget the next year, you're going the wrong way.
I understand that.
So, but we're gonna go over this here today.
I'm just saying, the fire department don't know what they're gonna get for calls.
Let me, let me just tell you this. The fire department has had a surplus for a number of years. This is not one-year event. You go back and look in prior years, that budget has had a surplus for a number of years.
He tries to keep it down.
That's fine.
How are you looked at over those years, like, if there has been an increase in calls, and like what percentage that is?
You know, I...
Maybe in the budget paperwork, I have to pull it to look.
Where does, where does a call cost you money? We hire these people, we hire, a lot of the people are full, aren't being paid anyways.
Fuel, basically.
What?
Fuel.
Fuel? Okay, so that's a moot point at this point. Let's roll on here, it's already eight o'clock.
So, now I'm going through animal control, communications, emergency management. Basically, everything's held flat. They went down by a couple thousand dollars. So, I'm gonna go into roads. District one winter, held flat. District one summer, held flat. District one summer, held flat. There was a $250,000 item here for paving, and that's been removed. And David, that was something that I think you had discussed with Will.
Okay, so what was that now? I was trying to find one of the lines when you were talking, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about the 250. Unless you have something you want to.
Go back down to summer maintenance, please, for me.
Summer maintenance.
Where is it?
I don't know, tell me.
It should be on one of those lines right there. I can't.
It should be one of these.
They're too big for me. I can't see them.
Total district one, there's summer, right there. It's right in this block.
Yeah, there we go, there we go.
That's summer.
That's 125, 762.
Okay, yeah, that's the number I was looking for. Okay, yeah.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so the 250 we took out. Will shaking his head. That's good.
Because of the paving project.
Because we got paving projects in there, specific paging projects. The same thing, flatlined for district two, and we took out an additional 250 in district two. Right? So.
May, can you come up here real quick? I got a suggestion here where, so where's the special projects? Back up there?
We haven't come to them yet.
Oh, so we want, we'll talk those out.
Special projects are at the end.
Okay.
We'll go over those in a minute.
Let, well, we'll get back to that in a minute. I thought we were already to that. I'm sorry.
Okay. There's a stockpile held flat. Public works building held flat. Transfer station had a $13,000 increase. A few lines here. Does anyone want to, any thoughts here?
So the retirement and longevity was moved to this department, and the rest, I believe, Ed will tell you was hauling.
Okay.
Tipping fees increases.
Okay.
Pretty much stuff that we have no control.
So this is pretty, this is pretty, it's contractual, really.
I have a question. You said, I've seen a couple of things. They have the electricity. You said that the rate was going to go down. Does that apply to these other departments or?
Yeah, he just sent an email about an hour before the meeting.
We'll have to go through all the electricity budgets and lower them.
Yeah, just wanted to.
Okay? Forestry held flat. We don't know what the county tax is, so we've made an estimate, right?
5% increase, if you don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. The musum dam costs have actually declined by $5,000. They were able to take advantage of some capital money they had on reserves that we applied instead of asking the towns to fund something. Here are all the social service budgets. They've gone up by $6,485. They're now $100,000. Comments?
Why don't you ask the board if they thought, what they thought about the library being a social service or pulling that out on its own, or do we think that's a social service?
I think that the library should be on its own article, and then the social services are obviously a different entity because we don't really have anything really to do with them.
No.
Kind of library, we kind of own the building and all that.
Yeah.
It's kind of a separate entity. And there's an increase in some of these where, I don't think, I don't think it would be right to be asking the fire department, every other department, to be cutting some numbers down, then give increases of social services.
I get it, yeah.
So I would prefer flatlining those from last year's.
But you want to leave the library as it is?
No, I would like to separate the library.
Yeah, but for right now, we can.
Oh, for the number?
Yeah.
Yeah, the number, I, I have no problem with that.
So we're taking out 3,500 social services?
I think that's it, yeah.
You guys agree, leave the library's increase?
Yep.
We'll leave that in there, but it's on a warrant article. Okay.
Yep.
And the social services.
Yep.
I looked through the thing we got from Jennifer. And again, there are two lake associations.
Yep.
And my question is why?
That's a good question, and you know how I answer that question. I don't believe they should be there.
Thank you, I agree with you. Write the date, we agree.
Because these same, these same associations were given money through Article 43 in the first place.
Are you giving money to somebody who has had kind of a rough relationship with us?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to pulling them out. The lake associations.
I think we've done it before.
I think Volts Lake and Great East, are those the two that you?
Yeah.
Which ones are you looking at?
Volts.
Volts Lake Improvement Association and Great East Lake Improvement Association.
But not the Acton Lake, Field of Larch Shadow, these four?
They work on all lakes.
Yeah, they go around.
It's a specific lake association.
No, I think that's a good idea.
So, okay. Oh, what did I do?
We changed tabs somehow.
Oh, is that what I did?
We're not on the budget.
Okay, there we go.
Alright, so we're taking.
So.
2,000 out of Volts. Is that what I'm hearing from you guys?
Yes.
And that's Volts.
Great East Lake Association.
2,000 out of Great East.
Dan, what do you think?
Okay, we're taking 2,000 there and 2,000 out of Great East?
Yes.
Yeah.
I. Okay, what else?
And what I recommend is.
Jesus Christ.
One of the, last year's numbers.
I'm sorry. You're hearing what I say at home. Sorry about that, if I offended anyone. Okay.
Everything also good on that one?
Well, yeah, I, I just, I, I don't, we'll go back to these.
Sure.
We're, we're not going to do any increases on the social services. We'll stay with last year's numbers.
Yeah, he put the 3,500 over there.
See there?
Okay, I understand.
Got it?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So we're just going to add that up, David, in that column, and that's what we've got, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, let's see what else we've got here. APAT?
Dropped.
Dropped $3,300. I thought it would have been more than that, Jennifer.
So, look at the department has, look at the breakdown. The department had salary. Labor was the two stipends together. I think that his, I don't know that the.
Something going on here. Something's not right. I thought this was going down like $15,000.
I think that the proposed budget is what you asked for in taxation, and it doesn't account for what you got from revenues. If we look at the warrant article.
Ah.
But I, that's what I think is going on.
Oh, because if you add in the revenues after the fact.
No, but I thought we reduced the expense budget by like $15,000.
That would make sense if you add revenues to that number there, you're going to come up with a $15,000 number.
Yeah, but that was, that's true for prior year number two. There should be a net reduction of 15.
Yeah, I know. Well, it was on paper somewhere.
Well, let's go back and look at that. We, we put in a new service, and we believe we're going to save something like $15,000 by doing that. We'll, we'll true it up and make sure we get the right number.
So that budget number is not right, because to see the town vote to raise and appropriate is 21,000, and spend an additional 27,000, so that should be easily 48 for the budget.
So, I'm just going to put $15,000 here that somehow is going to come out of here, or no?
Oh, no, no.
No?
The proposed FY 24 number, I think, is what's incorrect.
Ah.
That, I think that that total budget was actually.
It was 42.
So you think the 32, 2 is right?
I think the 32 is right. Based on this article, we actually spent 48.
Alright, we'll go back and check this to make sure we get all those savings. Now, now we're in special projects. Here, here are the salary increases.
Skip the rec.
Oh, did I skip rec? Oh, yeah, I did. Okay. What do we do here?
So it, I mean, it dropped drastically from earlier because the, the capital, the parking lot money was appropriated last year, so that's out. The program expenses went up 5,000. You'll see this, you know, so that did go up, but. And the grounds came out because you put all that municipal maintenance, municipal management, because it's now one budget. Looks like a savings, but is it really? Because it's somewhere else, so. The first special projects are down bottom.
Okay.
There you go.
Now, what's going on here, Jennifer? I'm not going to fool with that.
So that is a fixed number for the total of all salaries, stipends, everybody that would be affected by the 3%, 2%, whatever. You can play with this number if you want.
Oh, I see. So right now, it's growing by 3%?
Exactly, and that's what that 41,205 is.
I see.
But you're, see with the total special projects, clearly the 1.2 isn't in there because it's only 822.
Okay, alright, so it's just there as a.
So 41,000 is down.
Yeah, got it, got it. So inflation in, for the year ending June 30, '23 was 3.4%. So in my mind, I was thinking someplace between 3 and 3 and 1/4% but.
I think that's at 3 and 1/4 now.
That's at 3 and 1/4, if I.
Yeah, 0.03, right, go up one?
Oh, yeah, it is 3 and 1/4. So if I wanted to change that to 3, just to see what it saved, do I change that field?
Yes.
So 3%?
Yes. Yeah, there you go, that. So went from 41 to 38.
Okay, so it was only $3,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's what a quarter percent cost, $3,000.
So we're putting that in the other column?
I, I. I have my own view on inflation, but there, there is the quoted inflation number, and, and then there's the number you go when you buy groceries and pay for oil.
Yeah.
And, you know.
It's not the same.
Huh? Do you all agree?
Oh, 10% difference.
Do you agree?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so I, I, CPI is a good indicator, but I don't know, how do people feel about this? What do you want to do?
What have you just done now?
Hmm?
3 and 1/4?
No, that's 3, it's probably.
I don't think we should go below 3 and 1/4.
You don't, you don't think we should go below? Alright, so.
How did you come to 3 and 1/4 from what?
I told her it was 3, 4, Jennifer plugged in 3 and 1/4.
Said 3 and 3 and 1/2.
That's what I said. I said it ought to be someplace between 3 and 3 and 1/2. She plugged in 3 and 1/4, and we thought we'd talk about it tonight.
Because where are we, guys?
I'll, I'll make a proposal. Unless you have something you want to put forth, David.
Well, where are we here?
We're on the salary increase.
We're on salary increase, okay. I just want to make sure I'm ahead of you or behind you.
So we're trying to decide.
The 3 and 1/4 sounded fine with me.
3 and 1/4, okay, we'll leave it there for now, and we can continue to look at it. It, as, it doesn't make a huge amount of money difference on the budget, okay? Now, let's talk about all these H Road paving and etc.
So contingency, we skipped one time, huh? So your contingency line?
Yes.
That is 3% of the municipal management budget, as originally proposed, not less than 16, 376 we just took out.
Why is it that if it's a budget of 32,000, it has a difference of 41,000?
I think that 41,205 is, that may be.
Oh, it's the one above?
Right, I think that she just got to come down a line.
Oh, I see. She got, the formula's a good, no, ended down the line. I'll tell you what we did here was, in municipal management, we, we really trimmed those budgets to be pretty much on line with actuals. And the thought was that we should put in municipal management a contingency line, but it would be more transparent about what it is, so everyone understands exactly how much it is. That's what, 3%?
Yeah. And depending on how you worded this warrant article, it could, you know, could be used for other departments if the board saw it fit.
Oh, it could be?
Depending on how you word it, yeah.
Yeah, because right now, the only, the only thing we got is the $15,000 one right now.
Right.
And that's right here. We could get rid of the $15,000 one and just use this one here. It's just what it is, it just skips the process, makes it a little easier.
So you want to leave this here for now?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, if you squeezed everything out of the budget, you better have.
Yeah, well, that's why we, yeah, yeah.
Now, the contingency with the apartment would come to you all.
Select boards.
Yeah.
That's right.
It would not take up the.
Alright, let's go through some of these others. You're right, they're all off the line. I don't know why, but that's okay.
Yeah, but I just checked the formula. It's adding them all, so.
It is? Okay, good. So, David, you want to talk, David or Will, want to talk about these pavings?
On, on H Road paving, 90,000, it's a lot more than that, isn't it?
Yeah, the whole project's like 340,000.
Yeah.
The paving's like 260,000.
But what was the project itself?
Uh, it was a pave, it was a grind and repave a mile or so.
The total bottom.
Do you happen to have the, you don't have the paper with you? Do you have it on your phone?
I, I might, yeah, I think.
That's where it came, that's where the problem happened.
I have it on my email.
Because, okay, so you're, you think that entire project was what, 4?
Leslie's got it, I think.
Oh, does she? Cool.
That, we knew we had an error somewhere, and that's where it was.
Yep.
I want to say it's like 3.
You know I was missing something up there, so that number looks too small to me.
No, that's county road. See, county road says 4.
Just the number right here. That one's right, that one's correct, right?
Right, right.
Can I see that?
40,000, yeah. So H Road is going to go to 340, one to the left, huh?
There?
Yep.
Well, that's a bummer. We're doing it here for a little bit.
Whoa.
Now, I'll go to the tax rate just for a second.
Tax calculator?
Yeah.
What is it we're bringing over, 4,855?
I just want to see, because as I can see, we're at 10%. And when we, when Tom and I were reviewing this, we were at 10% when we started, and that's what happened. Remember, we were looking for a clerical error.
Yeah, so a tax rate right now is 710.
Right. So, alright, we're back to the whole budget. So are those other numbers correct?
Yeah.
Let's go back to the, to the budget.
340, 36, 40, yeah, figured it out.
No, that's not good.
Well, I'm not saying it's good, I understand.
How much is in here in total for paving?
One is 2, it should be right.
Right here. District, are we on district one right here? That's H Road. 260,000, so in theory, there's a $10,000 increase in the paving on that side of town.
That's correct, yeah.
Right?
For both division, for both.
Nope, just one side.
Yeah.
And then, of course, we got Hawk Road down below, which would have.
That should be 16. Yeah, 16,000. The paving itself is just 16,000.
Okay, I see it up here. Okay, 16,000, so.
County road paving?
That's district two, so, so, I'm sorry, 26,000, 26,000 more than last year in your paving, okay? Now, one thing that we, what, what is the overall? I think there's an overall, okay, so that's just, that's just, so 226,000 you have right there, just in your paving. Not including the 50,000 of machine time, 18,000 of materials. So, we got almost sixty, seventy-four, uh, around seventy-eight thousand dollars on top of that for the other two, you know, for the machine time and projects. So, um, we're trying to figure out how to, we're going to shave this down to a little bit. So, when we, when Leslie and, uh, you, you and I met, we talked about possibly, because you, when you wrote up your first budget, you wrote up your first budget as all the work was going to be pulled out of summertime maintenance, correct?
Correct, yeah.
But you didn't drop that number down.
Right, I didn't know, well, I guess I didn't know exactly how much I should drop it down, I guess.
Well, so, so, if you look at it, in theory, okay, if you have fifty thousand dollar machine time, eighteen thousand dollars in, uh, materials and culverts that you originally going to take out of summertime maintenance, then, and this is a two-year project, right? Uh, so, let's say that's, uh, let's sixty-eight thousand, say seventy thousand, half of that, thirty-five. There should be some money that you should take from here to put to there, right?
So, are you, so, are you suggesting taking money out of the summertime to off...
What, uh, what, yes, because you're getting it over here instead, right?
Right.
It's kind of double dipping.
Yeah, I, I...
Right?
Right.
So, what I'm, what I'm proposing to you is pulling, uh, twenty-five out of both the summertime maintenance accounts?
Yeah.
Okay, because you're adding on...
It's roti, is the way you put that in.
Uh, well, this one here, you're adding on seventy-five-twenty, you're adding on ninety-five thousand. That would have been coming out of that, those accounts. So, by pulling twenty-five and twenty-five out of the other two, and then, um, I think, pulling the Hawk Road for this year.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
Okay.
Because the surveying's not quite a hundred, it kind of got put on the back burner a little bit.
I thought they were done.
Uh, me too, but they're still, you finished, I got like the rough, rough done, but they have to finalize everything.
So, did, did I just hear twenty-five and twenty-five?
Yeah, yes, twenty-five from district one, in district two, summertime maintenance.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then deleting the thirty-six thousand dollar, uh, Hawk Road project.
Let me, let me, let me get there.
That, that makes sense to you, right? Because you're, the money is actually being paid out of the other side.
Jesus Christ. Why does it do that?
It's the news.
Are you doing something?
I don't know.
Okay, something, something I'm doing.
Backspace wanted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Those two major projects over a two-year period?
Yes.
Can you somehow fund them over a two-year tax period versus front-loading it into one year?
So, the, the, the way, well, we could do that, either way, we're going to pay for it.
You got to pay for it, but not all in one year.
Yeah, that's why we're, we're making the, so, I don't know how you pay for over two, because if he does it all next year, we've given him two years to do it, but he can actually finish the project in one year.
That's the intent.
That's the intent. So, if you do that, then that don't happen.
And I, I think this might honestly work, because I, I feel like what I've seen the last couple of years, we take so much right out at the beginning that you get to like summertime, you know, springtime, you're like, oh, Jesus, you know, you're kind of penny pinching in the springtime. So, I think, you know, doing it like that, taking the money out, I think it might get you a little bit farther ahead, maybe in the springtime, because I feel it's like, right now, if you look at our budget numbers now, you know, you're going to really have to watch it, because you've got to take, we were taking all that money, we were front-loading all that money right after, to do all these projects.
So, you, you, it should help you, because the projects that you're doing is coming out of a different account, it's not, not affecting your summertime maintenance stuff.
So, it's, oh, just keep going, sorry.
In theory, it's not really affecting your summertime maintenance, because you're not buying materials out of your summertime maintenance, not paying labor out of that. That's why I said by dropping that number down a little bit, because you're getting it on the other side.
So, the, so, the summertime will go from, it's at what, a hundred and twenty?
Twenty-five.
So, it'll go to like a hundred then?
Hundred. Yes, okay?
They're only two.
It sounds like we're cutting your budget, but you...
No, no, I, I, I...
But we gave you seventy-five thousand extra on the other side.
All right, so...
You know what I'm saying?
So, it's going to, so, we're doing twenty-five on both, both accounts?
Pulling twenty-five thousand, that's what I'm suggesting, I mean, that's just my suggestion.
No, if that number works, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I, I think, taking the mon, like, we have it now, doing the money, doing the special projects, taking that money out will just, I think you'll better off the summertime budget either way, because, you know, you're, like I said, you're always front-loading all that money out.
Yeah.
You're spending fifty, sixty grand before you know it.
Yeah.
And you only really got just a little bit for the springtime.
So, um, I believe by doing that and taking the, um, Hawk Road project off, you're talking, um, eighty-six thousand dollars right there.
Yep, we just...
Right? Did my math work?
Your math worked.
Hmm, so... As long as you're good with that, Will?
I, I, I think, I'm willing, I'm willing to, I'm willing to try, I'm willing to do, I'm willing to do it. I mean, I mean, I guess if it doesn't work, well, you could do it.
Well, you're getting an increase anyways. You're, you're, your summertime maintenance went from one-twenty-five to add eighty thousand to that, that's pretty much what you did.
Right, but that's, but that eighty thousand is just for that one project, though.
I know, but you're, you're, you're still not having to pull it out of your summertime maintenance.
Right, right, I, I understand that. So, 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 we're going to do, just again, so, we're going to do twenty-five out of district one, twenty-five out of district two.
And scratch the Hawk Road project.
Scratch Hawk Road, so that'll bring the budget to like around a hundred thousand.
That's going to bring your summertime maintenance to a hundred.
Okay, all right, no, that, that should work.
Okay, cool beans. Yeah?
You know what, I know we had an overage last year in our, do we, was that just like the, the stockpile account, or was that like a couple of...
You mean an overage?
I mean, uh...
Savings.
Savings. Was that like mostly the stockpile, or was that a couple of...
I think it was pretty much throughout your budget, I could look at you, Will.
I just... Stockpile, yeah, you, you guys didn't spend all that budget last year.
That was part of it, but I don't think that was all of it, Will.
Okay.
I think there were others. I, um, Kelly has that, she can get it to you.
All right, what's the next one? The current goal rate is about six-four-five.
Yes.
What, what is the goal you're trying, you're trying to keep it as it is?
Three percent.
Three percent.
Up three?
Three percent, is what we're looking at, an increase. We don't want to see more than a three percent increase in our taxes this year.
We have a long way to go.
That's why we're doing, what we're doing.
All right, what's next, under special projects?
Yeah, let's see, special projects. Oh, Jesus, uh, where is it?
It should be down, do you like the mouse?
No, I didn't use the mouse, but go ahead.
It should be, it should be down bottom, so hopefully it didn't close.
Well, let me go up. Where's the Excel tab? Oh, there it is. Okay.
All right, so, scroll up, there we go. All right, so, what's next?
Why don't we wait for David to come back?
All right, let me, just so much, let me put a couple formulas in, so we can know what we're doing.
I dropped that, that total over there as a credit, okay?
Wanted to put the number under there, but...
Some of, some of those numbers aren't in the right col, right lines.
Yeah, no, I know, but I can see that. Well, that's why we, you saw me double check that they were all added up into the one-twenty-seven-two. All right, so, next up for discussion is the tree removal, headstone, fence, replace or repair. This originally was a ten thousand, after speaking with Tom, they dropped it to eight thousand. You have the list, um, from the cemetery committee, I gave it to the Warren Finance, of the rows that, the trees that they're looking at in cemetery, so, changes on that one, it's a special project.
How much did we spend last year on this?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
It went to ten, and then came down to eight.
I'd leave it.
I, I thought it was, I thought it was a reasonable number, I think, I think the work is well worth it. But, and it's not a huge number as well.
Fire chief to twenty-five hours is the next one, this is the amount that it would take to, um, give him five additional hours.
Does this include benefits?
Can I fix those columns while you talk about it?
Yeah, sure.
It's driving me crazy. Um, well, there would be no additional benefits, just hourly, it's just hourly.
This would be on top of, uh, if we did the three-point-two-five, that's more sorry. Is he doing that amount of work, like, do we...
He presented to you guys, so, I mean, it was all in the... Let's see, all right, maybe I'm not going to... Now, I see what you mean, Tom. Click on, and see what you mean now, you click on, um...
Yeah, it's, I...
And then click on four-oh-four-Q, and it just won't let me, so...
Okay, you got it figured out?
I'm just going to leave it, so we don't miss it.
All right.
It was on one line.
All right.
All right, five extra hours for the fire chief, is where we're at, ninety-five-fifty-five.
What's the rationale for this? I, I mean, we've, we've always had, is it currently a, a, a fifty percent time position?
Ed met with him, he was no best, and he presented a packet.
Yeah, he claims he's spending more than the twenty hours there. I don't have any real documentation for it, but, other than...
I guess if it's, um, a naive question, if it's always been twenty hours...
It's kind of been around the table over the last, what, five years? You know, we've, we've gone from full ti, part-time to full-time to part-time to, I don't know, twenty hours? For what, four, five hours?
I'm trying to understand what's changed.
Four, five-hour days, you know, however you'd want to figure it. I don't recall exactly what he'd said about, just that he was spending more time there than the twenty hours.
Anyone got any thoughts on this?
What's the increase, ninety-five-hundred? Yeah, about two thousand.
Seventy-five, fifty-five.
Has there been any change in state requirements?
No. No?
No, I don't think so.
We don't intend that, we don't, there's no requirements of having a full-time fire...
No, you just have to have a fire chief.
Just have to have one, don't have to be hired, fired, whatever. So, um...
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think it's, and I'm sure it's an honest evaluation by the chief.
Yeah, I think it is.
I, I don't have any doubt that he's spending the extra time. The question is...
Is he need to spend...
Were, were, was the chief, the prior chief always spending that extra time and not being compensated for it? Which is not a good situation. Can he bring it back, can he do the job within the existing approved budget? If he can, then I would leave it where it is. If he's saying that he just can't get the job done within those hours, it, it, you know...
Can't tell you one way or the other.
And, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised if, if, uh, the prior chief probably put more hours in than what was there. David, you any thought on this?
Well, I mean...
You're, you're closer to it, you and I.
No, we don't, we don't see time cards or anything, so we don't know really how many hours are being put in, so...
Is there any opportunity for delegation duties?
Yeah, exactly.
He's got an assistant chief.
He's got an assistant chief, he's got an assistant, a paperwork person there, and, uh, he's also got his per diems doing the other stuff, so, I mean, um...
And he's also got a full-time job.
Exactly.
How much time...
Is he full-time in Sanford?
He's full-time in Sanford. So, how much time can he have? I, I, I don't want to cut him down, but I'm just...
There was an explanation in his budget, and I don't have it.
There wasn't any?
There was an explanation, yes, he put together a very lengthy document, I just don't...
I'm sure he did.
Do you have it?
I didn't see it.
I usually do, but I...
That was in there.
I'm happy to go ground it if you want to talk about the cars. That might carry over for a minute.
There are three cars in here?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
We've got one for the fire department, one for the town, and one for, uh, which include code, and one for animal control?
Yeah.
I, I think if we were to do anything on this, we should have a separate warrant for it?
Yes.
And for all three? Hmm?
Would, would that be together or separately?
I, I'd do one warrant for the whole thing, either, because i- if you're going to start providing vehicles to employees, because they're, you know, it, it seems to me all three of them have a legitimate need, one could say.
Well, well...
Because they're all getting mileage.
They're all getting mileage, which the, I, I believe the federal government calculates wear and tear.
They do, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, I don't, I'm not seeing the need, and, and also, with the ACO, we share that ACO with Shapley, what are they bringing to the table?
I agree.
He didn't, he didn't ask for one.
He didn't ask.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Jim does a great job, and, and, this is nothing about him, but it's, um...
Well, we got to look at...
You know, we, we buy the extra acqui, the, the equipment that he needs, which he def, he definitely needs and uses it to good work, but my, my question is what Shapley provides him, and they pay him significantly less than we do.
Let me cut to the chase. I'm not interested in any of these, okay? I would not do any of them. So, i- if that helps move it along, appreciate what you were saying, thank you. But personally, I'm not in favor of any of them.
I look at it differently. I'm in favor of them, but the problem we're having here is we have a huge overage on our expenditures.
We can't afford them.
So, it's whether or not, you know, I, I mean, if, if we didn't have all these overages ever as hell, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Right.
Didn't want a year.
So, um... I don't think it's fair that the code office who drives around every day, he gets pushed aside over the fire chief.
I didn't, I didn't say which one came first.
I'm just assuming, seeing your son put it forward, so... But, well, that's the problem, that's, that's why we do it, that's why we're putting it all in one, Robin, okay? And then at town meeting, you can get up and make an amendment to take that one off or add that one on, you can do that. But who gets one and who doesn't? That's the problem. And either we don't put it on, my solution is not to put it on for the simple reason, we're trying to cut everybody's budget, we're going to add that. It doesn't make a lot of sense, right?
But you said last week, uh, liability and...
What, liabilities on what? What did I talk?
On vehicles, on personal vehicles on town time.
I, I never, I, no, 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 so, I know better than that, because I had my personal vehicles working on town time for ten years, I know better than that. So, um, sure, I did.
Well, okay, so, we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those three vehicles?
Yeah.
What is the communicate that, sorry?
A hundred and fifty thousand for the three vehicles. I would suggest that we, given what we're seeing in the budget, I would eliminate this.
I got to agree. Um, the fire chief, just to go with that one, he asked me several times, what do I think the chances are of getting a command vehicle? Like, flat out, without even thinking, not well. And this year, we just decided, let's put it in, see where it lands. It's not a promised thing, it's just, see, you know, we just put it in to see, see how things look. And it's not looking so hot, so, I would take all three out.
Probably other priorities.
Yeah, I think we do have other priorities. And it's not that I'm against them, I'm just, this isn't the year.
The one forty-nine, eight-ninety-two is the total, one forty-nine.
Why don't we take home the sheriff department? We already pay county taxes. We haven't gotten there yet, Justin.
Wait till we get there.
We're working on it.
Let's go back up to the fire chief to twenty-five hours, so, I have a little blurb here, I grabbed his papers. I'm looking to increase the hours for the position of fire chief from twenty to twenty-five hours a week. Many weeks I'm here doing all aspects of departments of work well past the twenty hours. The slight increase will help us get closer to the needed hours of management to run the department.
So, he's, he's, he's already, he's already working a sixty-hour week between here and Sanford, and now it's going to be sixty-five?
You can't put Sanford in there.
Why not?
You, you can't, why, why, if you had two jobs, you're going to do one job over the other one? No, you can't do that.
Or you could just do the twenty hours.
That was just, that was just a comment I made, that's all.
It was just a comment, I was, I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, no.
His other job in months this...
All, all I was...
Thank you, I understand your point of view.
All I was doing was trying to, there's only so many hours in a week.
There's two options here, there's only two options here, okay?
Put it in or don't.
Either we put it in for an extra five, or we tell him he works twenty hours and goes home.
That's right.
But what happened when you pre...
Robin, Robin, we're trying to have a, a budget discussion here, okay? And I just gave two options, okay? I didn't say which one we're going with yet.
I'm not opposed to, to the extra hours, I'm really not, so...
I'm not either, I think the voters have, I mean, they can, they can, if they think that it's unreasonable, they can...
I, I, you know what? If, if they don't like it, they can amend it at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But what we're doing here is we're just trying to find...
Fine tune.
We're, we're doing something that hasn't been done in a long time.
Yeah.
So, um...
You know, I, I guess, uh, I'm fine with leaving it in, but I think I would ask the chief to find a way to delegate some of those responsibilities off, so that hopefully we can reduce this down. So, put it back in his hands and see what he can do to bring it down.
Because...
How's that work?
At, at the end of the day, when you look at a nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five-dollar increase in somebody's wage, when everybody else is getting a three percent?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the problem. But if you can justify a reason why the five hours is there, it's fine. Fine.
I just asked, we...
I put it forward.
Have, have him make an effort to get it back to fifty.
But also, that increase in, in the hours, that's going to be higher than that with the five, three percent increase, so that doesn't include that thirty...
Well, he shouldn't get the three percent if he just got a nine-hundred-and-fifty-five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, you can't do that.
Can't do that, I mean, how do you do both?
It's not technically a raise.
He's always a great study.
Wow, I guess, I guess.
He's working for it.
Well, at least I wouldn't do that, David, I, maybe you would.
I'm looking at it like that.
Delegation would be wise, because it applies to growth opportunities for those people who are taking on new tasks.
Yeah.
Yes, right, delegate, it's always...
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so, we're going to leave that one?
Yep.
What else haven't we covered here?
So, the next one is the additional 48 hours for each full-time staff member. So, that's $49,92 in the explanation here. The minimum staffing we set for our department is two firefighters, EMTs on duty. This is done with one full-time firefighter. Last year to meet the total budget of SLAC ward hourly rates, he says we'll cut from 26 to 25. He's hoping that this year we can correct the amount and allow for some training. I'd also, I'm sorry, I just took my part. I would also want to add 48 hours of pay for each of the four full-time employees. This is to help cover mandatory training. There's mandatory training required by the state to maintain EMS letter license. Other training may come up over the year, which is an account for the salary line.
Well, I think we acknowledged that there was a surplus in the fire department budget. I'd say have him go back and look at his budget, and if he can fund these, fund them within his budget.
And that sounds reasonable after we're asking the rail department to do pretty much.
We're not saying don't do it, but figure out how to fund it with your existing budget.
You're taking out $49,92 out of that line?
That's, that's, that's my thought. Have others, anyone else got another thought on that?
So, I'm kind of confused what he's, that, that's for training? Is that what, that's what he's saying it's for?
I think when he talked to us, he said that sometimes those trainings, like.
The trainings held on, a lot of times, yeah, weekends or days when the.
Outside of the river.
When the full-time people are not working, so they have to commit on their off time. So, I don't know, I'm not opposed to leaving that one.
You mean, leaving it in?
Leaving it in.
Others?
So, he's asking for how much?
Four.
$4,992.
That's for additional staff.
For some reason, it's down the line below.
Yeah, everything's off the line.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm just picking that up. I'll just leave it.
All right.
So, the next one that we haven't discussed is the generator line, which was the $11,700. And this was.
That's to run the wiring from the fire station to the ambulance building. I mean, that's the best way to explain that building.
Do we have a portable, portable generator that could be wired into the, the panel so that if, if there's a power outage, they could, you know, start up a portable generator and keep the place heated?
They do have portable generators, I believe, don't they, Robin?
Could we buy a portable generator a lot cheaper and?
Well, they already got them.
They already got one, that's fine. Although maybe in a situation like that, it's a.
I believe so.
I don't know size-wise what they are, because they're typically a generator that a fire department has is a small generator for lighting.
Just looks like a lot of money just to run out cable from one building to another.
You have to go, yeah, the way he explained it to me, the ambulance building's electrical panel is around the backside of the building.
They run a disconnect through the building.
Toward, towards, he had an electrician look at it, our electrician, I think, Norman Electric. So, the piping is there, they've just got to run the wiring from the fire station around, and then put, I think there's a panel they gotta put over there.
So, there's already piping from the original fire station?
So, they don't have to trench it?
No, they did put the piping in, I guess, I don't know, it was when they did the generator?
Probably, probably when they did the building itself.
Big generator or what? I don't know, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Around the backside, I think, I think around the building itself. The piping is between the two buildings, but you gotta go around the building to the backside.
Ed, didn't, I seem to remember him telling us when, when we met with him that they had to tear up some of the parking lot to wire it, which would, which is why it's so expensive.
At that price, they must. You're not running cable through it.
It was a combination of the excavator and the electrician. 90% the electrician and then a little bit for excavator.
Does that, not turning up to that, that didn't include, I'm guessing, we do, because I know there was talk about like them having to do work in that parking lot.
No, that was just the, getting it out. All right, what do we think about the generator?
If you were to put a standby generator over there, you know, dedicated, you're gonna spend that same money.
And, yeah, I, I'm talking about a portable.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Because we've never had to use it, we've never had a problem where the pipes have frozen, but I could see where that could come up, and we want to make sure that the pipes are protected. But it seems to me you could get a.
Seems like it's a lot of money, I agree.
You could get a portable generator, a lot cheaper, have it wired so it can be wired directly into the panel, and somebody keeps it filled with gas, it's gonna work.
Listen to Robin back there being a funny guy, huh? Oh, yeah. Honestly, if that parking lot needs a lot of work, what they should be doing is when they do that parking lot, do it then. That way, it's a one-shot deal, incorporate it all in one deal. And instead of, because digging that trench around the back, you got propane tanks, you got a septic tank back there, you're gonna be, that's gonna be, that's gonna.
It's a project.
Yeah. I'd rather see them incorporate that with a large parking lot.
I just, I just put it on the eliminate list.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, so the last one for discussion is the 5,700 from the rec projects, and I gave you all a handout tonight.
What does it say? I, I haven't had a chance to read it, Jennifer.
The batting cages, and, actually, the budget doesn't have that listed on there, does it?
Has the rec committee taken this up?
They did, and when we talked to them. When we, when I talked to them, I, I think John, I think John, Mr. Denneken was talk, was, we talked to the rec committee about pulling up aside their wish list. Am I correct? Yeah. And at this, at this time, I, I propose that we go with the running budget, everything excluding the wish list.
So, you wanna take the 57 out?
But you have some questions there, don't you, Dan?
It isn't the operating budget, weren't they, because you were concerned?
Well, that's part of it, well, we, we ought to.
Yeah, operating budget, things that were added, what is in the, the wish list?
It was the batting cages. I know there was $3,000 or something like that for travel, is that, am I right? I haven't got that in front of me for some reason.
No, because it was last week, it was given last week.
I was a conservative about whatever the items were, I think we talked about, it was two weeks or whatever, when they had a representative about items that I haven't discussed, but we had kind of.
I think he might be able to help us out here a little bit. There we go. Feel unprepared, yeah.
Yes, I know, I just sent it.
So, here's, here's her wish list down here.
The 5,700, David?
5,700, yeah. Thank you. And, yeah, so I, I think because we're being consistent here, we're fair to everybody, that's probably something they can do next year.
Any concerns? Going once, going twice?
A lot, Dan, he's, he's gonna.
So, if you go back to the, um.
The only, so what are the baseball empires for if we're not?
I think they're doing little guy baseball. It's the seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade they're not gonna do. So, I think they have the little guy, which usually the, usually the coaches and the parents usually do that, but.
And what is the training, the training for?
Uh, what's that?
The training, what is, what is, it doesn't specify what the training is.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
The training.
It says training.
Yeah, let me see that real quick, I'm maybe. Where are we here, training?
700, let's just see what it does in numbers. Oops, you're not there.
The cages, the empires, and then training, and it doesn't say what the training is for.
Yeah, I have no idea what that's for.
What am I doing?
It's on the wish list, so I think it was something to do with, um, I thought that was sending the boys to Sam, but that must be up here somewhere else.
The only one that I would consider, I would think maybe would be the empires, just because it's with the other sports, because we have reps for those sports, but other than that, without specification of what the training's for.
Okay, it looks like there was a $2,000 increase in one line, a comp share.
So, Jennifer, if. Look at the tax rate calculator, what number went from to get this?
And John, did you notice that? You, you're the leads onto the, the rec committee. Did we mention, I'm trying to remember here, see this line here where a comp share, see it says 2,900? So, the $2,000 increase, why is it, this is just projected revenue?
I've got three different budgets in my possession, and this is one that was submitted earlier, so I don't know where that came from.
Okay.
So, I have, and she's gonna, I always say. Yeah, we don't, we don't do that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, okay, perfect. Flag football, I think, was the one that you were asking about.
Flag football, plus the cost per trip, the tournament was one, plus there's a couple, oh, the soccer nets they ask, but they give a decent enough example, I keep 500 or something, that's just making sure that we keep tally of when we replace them, so we, we're not doing.
Yeah.
For like maybe two years or something like that.
Yeah.
But, um, they had asked increase for tournaments, even though they don't ask the registration fee from the other towns, which I thought there should be some cost the other teams are putting forward if we're gonna ask our taxpayers to.
Yeah. We'll have to quiet down our town administrator here, we're trying to have a discussion here.
Sorry, Tom's talking to me.
Oh, okay.
That's right, we're trying to figure where we are, but go ahead, please.
You got it already?
Well, yes, but if you go back to the whole budget.
We, we just eliminated $296,000 for, with all of those changes that we just made.
Which the tax rate gives brings you to 6.85, so you're still at a.
A 6.2. 6.2% increase.
We were talking about whether or not, you know, the, there could be an increase on these, um, unassigned fund balances to help offset that.
Let me, and this kind of, I'm, I'm probably gonna go into heresy territory here, but let me do it anyways.
Into what?
Heresy.
Heresy. But the Catholics, the Catholics in the room know what that is.
The belts and suspenders, I didn't get that either.
Oh, you didn't get that one? I'm sorry, am I, am I? Where is the tax, oh, the reserves, right here? Going back to this, if we're planning on taking 425, and we just said we're gonna take 500,000, right? That's how we got to that, 6.2%. That means that, um, what's going on? Something not right here? Give me a moment, maybe a formula issue. Oh.
Yeah, remember this one, didn't we dump it into, so we didn't, the formulas weren't gonna line up on this spreadsheet, a lot of that's manual.
What's the number you're coming up with right now, 6?
Hold on.
6.85.
Eight-five.
Forty cents per thousand tax increase.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Now, what is it now? 6.?
6.2.
6.5.
Get Lang.
6.2% increase, right, yeah. We, uh, did we, we haven't finished.
I can't use it. Let me try the calculator, let me see, let me.
We haven't, we didn't finish this line right yet, so.
Are you looking, so he took out the whole 5,700?
He did, okay. Was there anything else in there?
We will give a direction on the operating budget, we can go back and revisit that, if there's things in there.
Did they take out the things that we talked, then?
Yeah, here we go, Dan.
Then let's adjust the rec operating budget.
Jennifer, I can't get the cursor on that.
Hold on a second. What's that, Joyce?
On the, um, social services thing?
Yeah.
Right calculator, and adjust it here.
I wanted to put another.
Saco River, that's not enacted at all. Why are we giving the money?
Is that $750, wasn't it?
I don't, I don't know what.
Saco River corridor?
Calculating there.
But, and the other one, did you?
I do believe we, the Saco River corridor, isn't part of Bolsh Lake part of that? That's why we are a part of it? Yeah, because we have, we have somebody part of, part of Saco River corridor, um, what's his name? We've got two people enacted that are on that committee.
But it's not enacted, you know?
Part of the Saco River corridor is enacted.
It is.
I believe so. I believe the river coming out of Bolsh Lake is considered part of that. I believe, I might be wrong.
It's almost like there's something frozen in there.
Other than that, am I right? Charlie said so, so it's gotta be right.
For the operating budget, I guess, for the soccer, does that include the tournament costs? Because that was an area that I don't think we should increase the budget if they're not charging teams.
Exactly, yeah, we did talk to them about that.
What is the policy on uniforms? How come people aren't paying for their uniforms?
They pay, they do pay a registration fee to the rec.
But for the tournaments, I mean, we're, we're basically saying we're gonna give every person who participates in a tournament a trophy, so we're putting that on the taxpayers, but we're not asking the teams, even like a five or 10 dollar, that's not expensive for a team to.
Oh, they should have like a 50 dollar, a 60, a 100 dollar enter, enter fee like they'd make to do on the basketball.
So, that's something that I, I don't think we should, or I think should be removed. Footso, I guess, like, I wish, is footso doing our own program, or what is the, the footso indoor soccer? I know what it is, but I mean, like, where, what is this being used for?
It's something we haven't even approved.
We haven't approved, but also, I know, because I did it when I was in high school, I know Sanford, the, our Masson Community Center has a footso program, a pretty strong one, so, I, I don't, I would rather focus on some of the essential programs that we seem to have some struggle with, and try to bring a new program. I'd rather build up the base programs, and like I said, with another program in Sanford, I don't, I don't think that's necessary, if that's that 800. And then the flag football, we never talked about, but they don't have, I don't know if they have.
We talked about that about a year and a half, two years ago, we said, and we told them not to go there.
So, if we can, if you decide to make a cut to the operating budget, I mean, it's, it's, if we can make a recommendation, I mean, Tom and I need to clean this up a little bit, I know Warren and Finance has a meeting on Monday. We can certainly have this document over so you guys can start going through it, and just, you know, give us one more Wednesday to just tie everything up. But the board really has to decide if you're still looking, you know, if this six point, you know, 6.68 is, you know, is acceptable, if you're looking to lower it more, and how much do you want to take out of the rec?
And by the way, I plugged in for the school, because we needed something. I took their last year's budget and grew it by 3%. I really don't know what they'll come through at, so that's what that.
Objective.
That projection is, and they're still in the process, so could be more, could be less, I don't know.
So, just so we don't lose it, Dan, how much are you looking at with the rec miscellaneous programs? Do you want to flatline them from last year, and let's see if they can work off from that? Or do you have something specific?
They talked about nets, and I do think nets are essential, so I wouldn't want to take that out of the soccer. The only thing I saw for the soccer was getting the trophies up there looking to get covered, and then I would get rid of the footso and the flag, the flag football altogether. I mean, it's not much, but.
What are you talking, how much?
Looks like footso's 800, I don't know how much the trophies would be in the flag football, I don't know, anybody sees that with 23, 24?
Trophies are for the tournament, right?
I, I didn't see an, a projected revenue for the concession either.
Yeah, based on what they're producing out of it, they say it breaks even.
So, there's no revenues?
Is, is there any tracking of that when?
So, they do turn in, they turn in receipts, and they, we have two people sign off now. I know there was some discussion about maybe lowering the level of, of food that was offered, you know, more chips and snacks and hot dogs rather than, you know.
There you go. All right.
We, I can get that for you, Elizabeth, we do, we can check it on.
Okay.
I just, for the purposes of getting it in here, if we could get rather, we're counting on 500,000 from town reserves, 200,000 from school reserves. If we could get the total of those two, regardless of where it comes from, to a million, we're back to 3%. So, you gotta come up, you know, potentially another $300,000 reserves. The only problem with this is we got a cliff. When, you know, next year, um, those reserves are, may not be there, and so all of that's gonna flow into the budget, so it is sort of deferring it, and it's kicking the can down the road, if you will, for a year, which I'm not thrilled about.
Would you be better to take half then?
Well, ideally, I'd love to cut the budget, and, and I was just talking to Jennifer, I think there's something else we can think about doing in municipal management, and I'll, I'll, it, it's a sensitive issue, so we'll talk about that offline. I still think there's money in the fire department, I'm sorry, the fact that they had an $80,000 budget surplus, and I think if I go back and look in prior years, I'm quite sure that's And I think if I go back and look in prior years, I'm quite sure that's been pretty consistent through that period. So there's something there.
We just got to start budgeting, actually budgeting.
Well, that's what we tried to do with the municipal budget, and we really needed, we need to do that with all of these budgets. Unfortunately, we didn't get to them all this year, but next year, we got to make sure we go through these and we set them realistically.
We either need to take another three hundred thousand from someone's unassigned fund balance or lower the budget another three hundred thousand?
That's right. We just took out three hundred. It's another three hundred.
So can we, can we just have tomorrow to, all these changes that you guys have made, you know, obviously we're going to line this up and move the number four that you guys have talked about tonight, look at the total number, and then, you know, you guys, get the Warren and Finance's input on Monday on what they think of what the board has done.
So what we're going to do right now is get these numbers here, we're going to ship these to Warren Finance.
And with them knowing we're going to revisit it on Wednesday.
Yes.
All right, so this will come to us. Tom, will you be there if we have questions? All right, so we'll review that. I did send an email out to all of the committee members and asked if they wanted to see any department heads, and no one answered me, so I'm assuming that...
On your answer, if they want to do that, I don't know about how the rest of the board feels, I wish we could do it here.
Yeah, well, like I'm saying, I wanted...
I think it'd be unproductive.
I wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone had one last opportunity to say that...
I agree. You want to bring someone in, but let's do it here.
I didn't hear anything, so I'm assuming that everyone is good, so...
Charlie, you can come right on up. You don't have to raise your hand, dude.
Okay.
My question's real simple. Robert had mentioned something about elimination of the constable position, part-time position. What impact would that have? Is that on the sheet in front of me?
I don't know. I wasn't thinking about that.
So the constable gets paid fifty dollars every time he posts a warrant for an election or town meeting?
I'm talking about the sheriff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sheriff's car, yeah, we're not rolling with that.
No, I'm talking about the whole sheriff period. We pay our county taxes three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Oh, that's another whole issue, Robin. We already voted on that at town meeting.
We would sell the contract for a year, so that's something we can revisit.
But you know what? You want to campaign that at the next town meeting? I'm with you, man. I'm right there with you.
I'm just saying for the voters, you know, we paid eight thirty thousand dollars between us. We pay eighty-five dollars.
We pay seventy-five.
Seventy-five, and Shapley pays seventy-five. So if we got rid of that seventy-five thousand dollars, that would bring us down to...
Yep. Leslie's up at the podium right now. We're going to have to go with Lasso, Tom.
They're asking.
Yeah.
Tom, what do we anticipate making investments in annually? Let's say that for twelve months. This year, we're going to make two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Assuming nothing happens to interest rates between now and the end of the year, and I don't think they will. Next year, I lowered that because I think interest rates are going to break down. And I think I lowered it to four percent, thinking from where we are today at five point four percent. I'm assuming there's going to be some rate cuts, but it is a risk. It could go down more. Could not go down either.
So you said you needed another three hundred dollars, Tom.
Yeah.
Are you talking about two hundred and thirty?
That's already budgeted in. It's part of the revenues.
I've got a hundred and seventy-five next year. I think that's the right number. Hundred and seventy-five.
What's that?
Yes, I think I'm next year, off from this year's number two thirty. Thinking we're spending money, so the cash balances are going down, and the interest rates are going down. I think so.
So, go ahead.
Leslie, I just wanted to, I gathered some information for animal control for you.
Okay.
You know, the budget was flatlined, some of the items coming up, so we buy door hangers, which are paper cards for unregistered dogs, a snappy snare, which I encourage you all to Google, it's quite interesting, batteries for his cameras, batteries for the night vision, miscellaneous pet food. Shapley has gotten a catch pole, a hoist for the large animal, and a have-a-heart trap. He's still looking at the net trap slash gun, but he's already right around the fifteen hundred, so he's comfortable with that number between the two towns.
Okay, yeah, and you answered one of my questions too about what Shapley is providing also, so... Yeah, because I want to make sure, I mean, we, like I said earlier, we pay him significantly more than Shapley.
Not much longer. We just increased the salary over there to manage. Yes, it's going to pass at the March town meeting, but I expect it will. They're an open source.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, they were supporting him as much as we do.
They absolutely are.
Okay.
Nice. Okay, Lee?
Just real quick. Why are the bond requirements to maintain the highest bond rating for this town?
Well, that's the answer for today. To the best of my knowledge, we've never secured a rating.
We know what they are, so when we're doing metrics, we stay within the best bond rating as a goal?
That has never been established as a goal, and quite frankly, it means you're going to have more money in cash and reserves than you do now. To have a good credit rating, the best credit rating, means you've got a lot of cash laying around. And so there's a cost of having a good credit rating. A lot of places, they don't want a triple A, they're never going to get one, but they're happy with a single A, even if that allows them to have a carry of less cash.
The second part is, I think we're working towards capital reserves tied in with the capital planning process.
Yeah.
And what we're doing with the operating budgets, how is that going to impact long-term the capital situation of our...
So I'm not quite sure I understand that question.
We have a long-range capital improvement plan we're working on.
We're working on one. We don't have one.
And some of the excess funds, I thought, were going to be targeted towards some of that.
Means you don't draw in reserves for tax relief, you put it aside for capital. There are choices you've got to make. And it's either tax relief or capital. And right now, because you don't know what the capital is, we're kind of using it for tax relief, because I don't think anyone wants to propose a six or eight increase in taxes. Now, that may not be the right choice, but that's what I think we're effectively doing.
We discussed doing that last year.
Phil, come right on up here, please.
What are we going to do with this money, right?
I guess not.
I'm sorry, do you want to come up and make comments? I heard most of that, not all of it.
Yeah, sit down.
We're all tired. So at this point, everything's going to the finance committee? They're going to do their thing Monday, right? Monday?
We're going to go over those things, and then I'm assuming that we'll have, you'll have your meeting next Wednesday, and then we get the warrant after that?
Yes, so we can, we have made good strides on it, but obviously until they made these decisions...
And I understand. I just want to make sure we have enough time to meet our deadline.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, David has them in his hand. Looks like he's on... There are two agenda items we have to get through. I'll have David sign one of them. So one is the town hall streaming. You've already approved the changeover to that.
Yep, that's why I'm allowed to sign it, right?
Poll permit from...
Does the streaming one need a vote, or we're all set on that?
We should vote on both of them anytime you're signing.
Okay, well, then I move that week, except the town hall stream contract.
Seconded. All in favor?
Okay.
Streaming.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. What's the poll permit?
There's a poll permit for, was it Orchard Road? I gave it to David.
Yeah, I get it.
You got it?
Yeah, poll permit for Orchard Road, poll number twenty-three. I'll make a motion, we...
Second.
Approve it.
All in favor?
And then while you're signing, the only other thing is, obviously, we haven't had a chance to look at that letter. I can tell her that our meeting went long, and if she wants to extend it one week to see if you'll consider the in-support from Mr. Lang we spoke of.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, the grant, yeah.
We want to authorize one of you to, authorize one of you to review it with me tomorrow, Friday. Two of you can come in and sign it, and I can call you and we can talk about it.
Come in, Tom. Hey, Dan, you want to take care of that?
Tomorrow?
But we're still going to need a couple of signatures, but we can at least review it and see what it is in.
I don't think I have time tomorrow because I have classes, and then I have the school committee at five.
I can, I can come in tomorrow, not first thing.
Listen, it's nine o'clock, and nobody's coming first thing.
I'm going to be out of town.
Well, what time are you folks open? What time does the town hall?
I'm usually here by two. Let me pull this thing and review it, and I'll call you all.
Oh, I can, okay, cool.
Okay, we...
I can easily do it.
Where's the... Make a motion, we adjourn. All in favor?
I got one question.
Oh, a public comment, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, why was the service with Mark Roy terminated, or why did they give that?
We talked about it before. I'm happy to do it again. He has a health issue.
Phil?
He's no longer going to be able to provide those services, and that firm is disbanding that unit altogether. So...
He canceled us.
He basically has a heart issue that he could no longer continue. So he regrettably did that, the firm did, and speaking for myself, I was thrilled with the work he was doing, so that was not the issue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I heard a motion. Did I hear a second? All in favor? Good night.